We've already called the meeting to order. Do everyone join in?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll highlight the agenda this evening. First, we will go through the minutes of the regular meeting of May 7th, that will be followed by community relations announcements in open forum. After that, we have three appointments and resignations. We have an appointment for the Board of Registrar, resignation, Council on Aging, on a resignation for Council on Aging Outreach Coordinator. We have three scheduled appointments. One for 6:45 PM, a poll hearing, as requested by Mr. Barosky.
For Partridge Hill Road?
6:50 PM, Chapter 61 Removal Request, Gunter LLC. 7:00 PM, Northeast Energy Center LLC, update regarding the project. We have seven items under new business. Number one, Fiscal 20 Fuel Procurement Bit Award. Number two, Code Red Contract Award. Number three, request for common victual license for coffee food, Georgia's Pizza 3 in Charleston. Four, a request for a special alcoholic beverage license, Allen R. Terrell, Knights of Columbus. Number five, Planning Board Invitation, Local Review Committee for LNG Terminal, Designation of Member or Members. Number six, the Dudley-Churton Regional School District Liaison, Deb has been meeting with them. Number seven, Sex Offender Bylaw Committee, I have asked this to be on the agenda. Then, under old business, we have a few items. Number one is a discussion with Attorney Jonathan Silverstein to discuss available permits and also short-term investigation. Number two, independent order to investigate actions between the BOS, planning staff, et cetera, as discussed on 4/9/19. After that, we'll have any committee reports, BOS policy reviews. We are going to move the Student Select Person's Report up to the beginning, so she can focus on finals. Then, we will have the Town Administrator Report, followed by any other business unknown at the time of posting. And then, we will, after the next meeting announcement, adjourn into executive session. That will be read. First item on the agenda will be the minutes of the regular meeting of May 7th, 2019.
Chairman, I'd like to approve as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any comments or discussion regarding the minutes of May 7th, 2019? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Through the chair, I abstain. I was only there for part of the meeting, remotely.
Thank you, Mr. McRath. Opposed? Chair votes aye, we have four in favor, one abstention. That passes. Ms. Craver, do you want to read through it, or do you want me to read through it? I'm finding it way. Oh, we'll go through. So, next will be the Community Relations Announcements in Open Forum. Charleston, a new announcement. Charleston Annual Town Meeting has been continued to Wednesday, June 12th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at Charleston Middle School.
That is different from the date. You might want to just mention.
Correct. And that is different from the date that was decided at town meeting, as it was discovered after the fact that the school was not available, and we had to find a new date that we could access the building. Other announcements. May 23rd, Spring Community Respect and Responsibility Concert. Shepherd Hill Regional High School will be featuring their jazz band, Color Guard Percussion Ensemble, and Concert Band, on a night to celebrate those three values they hold dear. Admission is free, although they would encourage the attendees to bring a non-perishable good to be donated back to the community food pantries. The Concert Band will be performing works to salute our local veterans. The Town Hall will be closed on Monday, May 27th, 2019, in observance of Memorial Day. The Charleston Memorial Day Parade will assemble at 1:30 PM and step off at 2:00 PM, rain or shine, from the Sonic Home, and proceed to the front of the town library at Dexter Hall for the Memorial Day Program. Representative Peter Durant will hold office hours on Tuesday, June 11th, 2019, from 11:00 to 12:00 in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. We have a few road closings. Brookfield Road to the Town Line will be closed daily from June 3rd to the 15th, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM for reconstruction, and will be open to local traffic only. Harrington Road will also be closed daily for construction, this from July 8th to the 19th, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and will also allow only local traffic. The Council on Aging has one opening for a two-year term. Anyone interested should submit a letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen, no later than Monday, May 27th, 2019. The Electronics Recycling Event will be Saturday, June 8th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, at the Federated Church of Charleston, 64 Main Street. You can see the calendar on the town's website at www.townofcharleston.net for the list of items that can be recycled. If you have any questions, contact green day recycling ma@gmail.com. Is there anyone here for open forum? Todd.
Good evening. I'm Todd Girard. Normally, I dress myself as your Conservation Agent. I've also been your interim Veterans Agent. This evening, I'm just going to address you as a town veteran, and I just want to express some of my thoughts. And I'd like to thank everyone for their service to our town, our state, and our country. And I want to thank you for being defenders of freedom. The United States motto for the Army on June 14th, 1775, is "This Will Defend." Isn't that kind of neat? Because we don't know what "this" is. This is what we'll defend. We are it. On May 24th, 1917, the First Infantry Division, or Big Red One, was formed. It's the longest continuing division in the United States Army. Our motto is "No mission too difficult, no sacrifice too great, duty first." I deployed to Iraq with that division. During my deployment, 148 of my fellow soldiers were killed in action. 145 of my fellow soldiers were killed through non-battle-related injuries. Fifteen of those soldiers were females. 467 of my comrades were wounded in action. I am lucky to come home and be here. May 27th is right around the corner, and I'd just like everyone to take a few minutes and remember what the day is about. It's about the sacrifice that these people, men and women, have made for our country. This is the ultimate sacrifice that I personally witnessed. Please, help everyone, help yourselves, show the respect, and do the right thing on Memorial Day, and come show some... Show some respect to my fellow comrades who couldn't come home. And I would just wonder if the Select Board would like to lead off in a moment of silence in honor of those people during this trying time that we're going through.
There's comments from the board. So, Todd, I think it's very well spoken. Do you want that to happen today, and I support you in it, or do you want it to be at Memorial Day?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like it right now, just...
So, I would, again, I will go with the board's wishes, but I would like to see Mr. Girard's request of honor.
Absolutely.
Most of the moment of silence.
We have a motion?
Second.
A second. So, if everyone, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you for saying so.
And I think the message is important, as someone who has a lot of members of my family to serve. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. I, uh... Staff Sergeant, I go on time. Our motto is following it all the way. Supposed to sleep back there.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Is there anyone else here that's emotional that Todd, thank you? Anyone else here for open forum? Okay. That being said, our first appointment is for a Board of Registrar. Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir. We were notified by Town Clerk Karen LaCroix that a Board of Registrar member is not allowed to be on any other town boards or committees. Jordan Evans can no longer serve as a registrar as she is on several boards. As required, we sent a letter by certified mail to Joanne Powell, the Chairman of the Republican Town Committee, asking for a list of three names of candidates for consideration. Town Clerk LaCroix stated that they needed someone that was available during the day when needed. After reviewing the three names provided, the town clerk is recommending the Board appoint Joanne Powell as a Board of Registrar member with a term expiration date of April 1st, 2020. I would recommend the Board make the appointment, as requested.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. My apologies, we were going to take the Student Select Person, so that she could get onto her finals. So, if it's okay with you, Ms. Fundowski, we'd like to have you go, so you can get through your studies.
Because we can't be used as an excuse if you don't do well.
There's not a ton. Obviously, the year is coming to a close, so Shepherd Hill is kind of slowing down a little bit. Over the next two days, there's MCAS testing, and June 4th and 5th will be bio MCAS. Thursday, May 23rd, at 6:00 PM is the band's bump, uh, band's pop concert. Thursday, May 30th, is their senior banquet at Holy Cross. And then, the 31st is their last assembly, and they graduate June 2nd. And then, on June 8th, is the More Than Music Connie Galley Show, which will also be at the high school in the auditorium. And then, for next week, I just wanted to let you guys know that I have a prospective Dudley rep for next year, who will be shadowing me during the mock town meeting, so that next year, I don't also have to do it in Dudley, because this year, I'm doing both of them. And then, he should hopefully be able to teach the sophomore junior who is following after we graduate, and then I will be training the Charlton member for next year.
Excellent.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Number two, under appointments, and thank you, Anya. Resignation for Council on Aging?
Yes, sir. Attached is a letter from the Council on Aging stating that Gail Stokes has resigned from the Board after seven years. We have advertised the opening on cable and the town's website, as the Board's policy states. You are asked to accept Ms. Stokes' resignation. A letter has been prepared thanking her for her time.
Mr. Chairman, so moved with regret.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. The next item is a resignation Council on Aging Outreach Coordinator. Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir. Attached is a letter from Deborah Cheslick, Council on Aging Outreach Coordinator, notifying the Council on Aging that she will be retiring on August 29th, 2019. The Board should accept her resignation effective August 29th, 2019. As we get closer to the date of her retirement, a certificate will be prepared for the Board to sign and acknowledge Ms. Cheslick for her service to the town. And if I can go off script for a moment and state that she has been a true asset to the town, the team downstairs, and has done her very best to serve the seniors.
Thank you.
So moved, and I wish her a wonderful, wonderful retirement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
How long has she worked for the town?
I can get that information for you.
Okay. And when will we start advertising for her position?
Just before, um, I will check, actually, I will check with the Council on Aging on what their process in working with HR is.
Okay.
Generally, we start a couple of weeks before.
Because it says here, her last working day is July 22nd, so that's a full five weeks plus before her actual last day, so.
I will check.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. A little behind schedule, move on to our first scheduled appointment, that is the 6:45 PM poll hearing on Partridge Hill Road.
Mr. Chair, attached, you'll find a request from National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, seeking to install one JO poll on Partridge Hill Road. Also attached is the notice that was sent to the Butters. This request has been forwarded and approved by both the Chief of Police and Highway Superintendent. No comments or concerns have been received. The Chairman should open the public hearing by reading the notice as sent to the Butters.
Thank you, Ms. Craver. May 14th, 2019, public hearing notice. The Charleston Board of Selectmen will hold the public hearing on Tuesday, May 21st, 2019, at 6:45 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, 37 Main Street, Charleston, Massachusetts, 01507, to act on a request from National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., requesting permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Partridge Hill Road, National Grid to install one JO poll, began at a point approximately 1,860 feet south of the center line of the intersection of AF Putnam Road, and continuing approximately 15 feet in a west direction. National Grid to install a 40 C2 poll, number 43-50. They are also asking for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways, for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings, as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified, or submit concerns in writing. And I will declare this hearing now open.
Sure. Welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon. Now, the permission to...
Oh, sorry, could you state your name?
My name is Joseph March.
And street address? Any street address, please?
190C Partridge Hill Road.
Thank you.
And the pole that's in, they're going to be putting in, is at the end of the right-of-way that goes to my house. Now, the permission, is that, you're trying to lay the wires underground? Is that what this is trying to get across?
Do we have someone from National Grid?
There is someone here who can answer the questions. Can you come up and answer their questions, please?
Oh, sorry, can we have your name?
Sure. Mark Taffley from National Grid. So, as far as I'm aware, I wasn't the designer on this job, I was asked to come and represent him today, as he had a petition hearing. We don't intend to run...
Talking to the microphone, people are watching at home, they want to know the answers too.
We don't intend to run any wires underground, as far as I'm aware. This is for a...
Thank you.
We currently have an aerial trespass going over someone's home that they're going to be rebuilding. So, pole 43-50s to go to the end of, towards the right-of-way. And then, we have an easement to run and maintain on the left-hand side of the right-of-way that goes up toward the 190B, Partridge Hill Road. So, we'll be moving the two poles in that right-of-way to the roadway, to remove an aerial trespass that we have going over a building.
What was that again? You're going to move the two poles that are already existing on the right-of-way?
On the right-of-way, they'll be moving to the roadway.
It's a right-of-way right now. It's a private right-of-way.
The, from what I was informed, the easement that we have for that right-of-way, is we're allowed to maintain these roads on the left, these poles on the left-hand side of the right-of-way, and move them closer to the road. I was not the designer on that, I'm only relaying the information that I was given.
Now, what you're saying, the move the poles closer to the road, what road? The existing right-of-way?
The existing right-of-way, that goes from 192 to up to 190B.
Right now, the poles are right on the edge of the right-of-way, right now.
I'm not aware of exactly where he'll be moving those poles. I know that he does intend to have them moved to the edge of the roadway, to remove an aerial trespass where the wire does go over a building.
It doesn't, right now, the wire does not go over a building.
So, one thing I'd like to do, if you're okay with it, is to postpone and continue this hearing, when the designer himself can be here, because I think they have a right to specific answers that he will be able to answer, and we appreciate your time. But, since there are people with questions, I'd like to have the designer here to specifically answer their questions.
Through the chair. Could I also make a suggestion to the designer? If he could bring us actual pictures of what is, you know, the building that's being affected, where the aerial trespass is, and then explain to us with the pictures as to exactly what he plans on doing. That's probably the best way to do it. Picture's worth a thousand words.
Yes, but could you also relay a message that, right now, if they want to go on the ground in front of their property to bypass it, they have a pole on one side of their property, they can put one on the other side, go under their ground, and then come back up, leaving the poles where they are? If you can relay the message.
I can't talk on the design.
So, through the chair, I would also recommend that National Grid contact, you take their information and contact them and do a site walk, and just have a conversation with them.
I need to speak on this matter, because I do have pictures of those poles that are being affected, that are in front of the prop house that was just built, which is ours, and the poles that run across their property that are held up by two-by-fours, there's wires. So, I have pictures, if that helps you guys at all.
So, and I appreciate that, well, I'll, again, I will go with the board, but what I would like to do is, yes, look at those pictures, but I still would like to look at them when that designer is here, to address the pictures, to address their concerns, and still to, Ms. Craver's comment, have, and again, you guys will make the motion, but what I would like to see is to have that designer come out, do a site walk, look at the property, answer their questions, come here to answer their questions, and look at the pictures, so I think we can do this properly.
They were starting, I thought that what this was about is this one pole at the edge of, on town property.
Can you come up and use the microphone also, and just, like everybody else, state your name and address?
It is not town property, this is a right-of-way. I own the right-of-way. It's not town property.
So, we will also do that, I hope, at the same time.
Rob Libangi from 198 Partridge Hill Road.
And Tom String, 198 Partridge Hill Road.
And I believe, and I could be mistaken, the pole that they're looking to put in first, not even addressing the other poles that he's discussing, is on town property, at the edge of the right-of-way, but on town property. But, where the wires are being run right now are across their property, that part of those wires are being held up by two-by-fours, and like I said, I can show him pictures, you pictures, if you want them now.
I, again, I would ask to hold that for when we continue the hearing, when the designer's here. And also, shall we ask Mr. Foskett to be present at this meeting, when the designer comes back as the Highway Superintendent? I'd like to have him here also.
Quite often, it's much more, if I may, helpful if National Grid is able to work with the neighborhood, to come in with kind of a unified, if that's possible.
They've reached out to the marches, and they've refused to help in any way. National Grid has the legal team now working on that to, because it does say that poles can go on the left side of the right-of-way. Does not say where, it just says on the left side, to bring wires to the houses there. Right now, the way the wires are run, do literally go across our property, which you could reach out and you could touch those wires. So, what National Grid was proposing is just a straight line of wires, not, you know, out of the woods and all of that. They refuse to allow any kind of cutting of trees or trimming of trees, and it actually benefits everyone. It's just, it's a, safety-wise, everything, meter, every, all of that. But, what this I thought was about was just that one pole on Partridge Hill Road, not on their property. That's all.
National Grid never contacted us.
I'm just saying, what I'm...
Hopefully, that will be addressed now as well, because part of the request is that the designer contact you directly, if you could get their information.
Mr. Chairman?
Barosky.
Thank you. Mr. March and Ms. March, just for everyone's benefit, can you give me the 30-second elevator speech on what your biggest concerns are for this? Just for, just so it'll be clear to everybody, when we go back to National Grid, to say, here's what needs to be resolved, so that we don't have a back and forth.
The pole at the end of the right-of-way, that they show, the P43-50, no problem with that one whatsoever.
Okay.
The gentleman from National Grid said that they're going to be moving poles onto the right-of-way. That is the problem I have, because it is the, it is our right-of-way. It is a private right-of-way. We own it, both me and my father, and if they move the poles into the right-of-way, it affects snow plowing. It affects, if the road's snowy, I can end up hitting the plow, hitting it with the plow, I can hit it with a car. Right now, the poles are on the edge of the right-of-way, right at the edge. That's where they are right now, they're perfectly fine right where they are.
So, through the chair. So, you're, again, just so everyone's clear, so you're okay with the installation of 43-50?
That one pole, yes. And the only other question I do have is, because it's illegal to push snow across the road, that side of the right-of-way, I push snow. That's where I push it. That pole's not going to be in the way, but if there's a support cable that's going to come down, that could be a problem, me trying to put snow.
So, it's the modification to the other poles that is your concern?
That is correct.
So, what I would, to echo my colleagues, I think the biggest key is, would you be amenable to talking to National Grid, to at least have this conversation?
If they come to see me, absolutely.
So, if you could pass that message along, then I would, again, what I would like to do is make a motion to continue this, and at the next meeting, hopefully, at that point, that this conversation would have occurred, and that we have both Jerry show up, the designer, and again, I know you're in a tough position, so I get it, and then we'll advertise it, and hopefully, we can all resolve this and get it taken care of as easy as possible.
This is two separate issues, though.
It is. We're just looking at the one pole right now.
For now, and then we are working on another aspect.
Right. And that's what I'm trying to understand here, because what, because what we're talking about right now is just this singular pole. So, if there's a, if there's a secondary issue, then I think we can discuss that. And I suppose that's, you know, that's what I was getting at, is that if by installing 43-50, if you're okay with that, would, can we motion to go ahead with that, understanding, obviously, that there is this separate issue around the other modification?
It's correct.
Yeah. So, would you be amenable, just to at least move something along here?
You can certainly put that pole, again, I question about the wire, support wire, if they put one, because that will cause a mere hazard trying to push snow, because I plow the right-of-way. It's my right-of-way, I plow it. And putting a support cable down, because I can see where they put a peg, and I have no game, no problem putting the pole there, that wouldn't be in my way, but if there is a support cable that comes down to hold the pole, that could cause a problem, we pushing snow. And when I push snow, sometimes during a blizzard, and I probably won't see it.
So, here's an odd procedural question, and I'm really opening this up, because I really don't know. Do we have jurisdiction over that? Meaning, a new pole placement of 43-50, I think we can even approve tonight, because it sounds like everyone's okay with that part. It's the matter of the modification to the other ones. So, do we have any jurisdiction of that whatsoever?
So, just, in regards to the motion, the first motion you made, and let's hold up, have these, have these folks all talk with National Grid, I think that that's still a valid thing to do, only because of Mr. March's concern as to where the guy wire for, you know, the support wire for the pole is going to be.
There shouldn't be one for this pole.
It's less than 125 feet.
It's less than 125 feet, and it goes in that direction, so it would pull the pole towards that direction.
I would still say, honestly, just because, it's so rare we actually have controversy over a poll petition, that I would still rather have, everyone just have a brief conversation, try to have a discussion with the, with the marches around this.
We've tried.
At least around the 43-50.
So, we'd like...
If the next meeting...
The point is, we'd like National Grid to communicate with them directly.
And what I'm hearing is that you guys would be absolutely amenable to having that conversation, at least.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Because nobody's ever contacted us.
Through the chair.
To Mr. Barosky, is your motion, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. And I will second that, then.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to continue the hearing, to the next Selectmen's Meeting, so that the marches have a chance to be contacted by National Grid, and also have everyone come back, including the designer himself.
And Jerry, and Jerry.
Will there be an onsite meeting there?
And hopefully, they, part of the conversation you have with them will be for the designer to come out and actually be onsite with you as well, prior to that meeting. And also, to ask Jerry Foskett, the Highway and Superintendent, also to come.
I'm hoping this is one of those opportunities where, literally, a conversation resolves everyone's concerns.
I'm sorry, if I may just speak for just one second also. Hopefully, this will be done expeditiously as possible, as sometimes we know, in the course of such things, that certain times, some people can drag their feet, for whatever reason it may be. It seems as if, without a guide wire, if there's no guide wire involved, it shouldn't be a problem. I don't think the marches have a problem, I don't want to speak for them, but it sounded like they... I don't want to speak for them, but it sounded like they said they wouldn't have a problem if there was no guide wire. I'm just hoping that this will, can move forward.
So this will move, we will have this for the next selectance meeting, and if, and if, and if National Grid does or doesn't respond by then, then we'll have an issue with National Grid.
And I spoke with National Grid, Jay, who was on this, this design thing. I spoke with him today, and he has said that he has reached out to them. So I mean, it's a, it's a back and forth thing, I mean, they've talked the whole way.
So here's what I would suggest. Because we've had issues with National Grid in the past, and we could have issues with them again. If he has reached out and they have not responded, I would ask him to, when he comes to the meeting on, our next meeting, to show proof of his communication, which he should have, either certified letters or emails to show that he has reached out to the marches. If he does not have that, then that's what I would hope to see. And I'm hoping that in the meantime, prior to that meeting, that he does reach out to the marches, and that they do have a site walk, and that we're all here together again on our next meeting to get this resolved.
Because again, because I agree, because again, you know, it sounds like two distinct issues. That if we can solve for the one, hopefully, we, that, that, that the other flows through. But until they have that conversation, it's all for naught. However, again, to your point, we should expedite this as quickly as possible. This is not something we should be dragging our feet on.
Correct.
So. Everybody relatively happy at the moment?
So with that.
Not really, I'm just saying, because it is two separate issues. We have to take legal, they have to, National Grid has to take legal action for those two poles to be moved. They don't have to necessarily take legal action to work with the town to have that pole on town property. Has nothing to do with their property, has nothing to do with them pushing their snow. You know what I mean? I mean, that's, that's.
So while I, and while I do appreciate that, I don't want to get into personalities, this will be resolved within two weeks, and it will be over. So we have a motion and a second to continue this hearing until our next regular selectance meeting. Is there any other discussion?
I'm good.
Then that being said, all those in favor of continuing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. We will be back here in two weeks to finalize this.
Will we get a letter in the mail to make sure that we?
Thank you, and bring the picture to you, please.
No, no, I think it's going to be a, through a chair, I believe this would be a continuation of this hearing.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
So we've continued the hearing, we have an exit.
June fourth, is it?
June fourth.
June fourth, six thirty PM roughly, they'll post the agenda online. If you have any questions, just reach out to the office.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, I know you're near the spot.
You can step outside, I'll get your information.
Excuse me?
If we can step outside, I'll get all of your contact information.
Happy we haven't established that.
We're the solving problems, they're causing them, I'm not sure which. It's a good sign.
Solving.
All right.
Solves, expeditiously. Okay, thank you for everyone for tolerating the board. Our six fifty PM appointment will be Chapter sixty-one removal request, Gunter LLC, Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir, attached is a request from Gunter LLC, Roy C. Gunter III, managing member, requesting to sell and convert parcels ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen on Boucher Road as identified on Assessor's Map forty, currently held in Chapter sixty-one. The planning board, Board of Assessors, Conservation Commission, and Water Sewer Commission have all reviewed the request and have no objection to the town choosing not to exercise their right of first refusal, refusal for this request. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the attached public hearing notice. I would recommend the board approve the withdrawal of the parcels from Chapter sixty-one as requested.
Thank you, Ms. Craver. Public hearing notice, please be advised that the board of selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, at six fifty PM. A little late. At the Charleston Town Hall, thirty-seven Main Street, Charleston, Mass. Oh, one five oh seven, to act on a request by Gunter LLC, Roy C. Gunter III, managing member, who intends to sell parcels ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen located on Boucher Road as described on that plan of land recorded on January thirty-first, two thousand nineteen in the Worcester District Registry of Deeds at Plan Book nine forty, Plan fifty-four, as identified on Assessor's Map forty. Anyone interested should appear at the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing, and I declare this hearing now open. And we've lost the town administrator. So the hearing is open, is there anyone here to speak on this? No questions, no comments, no concerns. That, go ahead, Mr. Barowski.
Just a quick thing that I would like to recommend for the future, we don't even have to debate it tonight. When it comes to issues like this, what I would, again, with, with deference to our board, what I would ask is that the town administrator prepare for us a very brief pro and con list of why it makes more sense to not purchase as opposed to purchase? Because I think it would allow us the opportunity, because again, I mean, I think we all read our packets and say, okay, you know, everyone else says it's okay. But I think it would be nice, much like many of us do at work, to say, here's pros versus cons, and if the pros for skipping it are dramatically more, yeah, that makes sense, but I don't have a good, a good idea right now, for example, of, well, if we did buy this, or is there any opportunity to, to, to leverage this land in the future? I think on this one, it's fine knowing where it is, but on a go-forward, I don't know if it's a policy, I don't know if it's just, look, this should just be business as usual, that for things like this, that we do have like a pro versus con, risk versus reward, very brief presentation, I can't emphasize brief enough, so. But that being said, I'm, I'm, I, I have no questions on this one.
So I, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Well, it's a wonderful, thank you.
So, Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Barowski had an, an idea, I think the board concurs, it's a good idea, on the Chapter sixty-one removals, if you could in the future, please include the pros and the cons of removing or keeping the property.
The pros and cons on whose perspective?
The town's.
The town's in general. Basically, would there be a bene, what benefits, if any, would there be?
Potential.
Potential for, for the, for the, for the, for us to.
In the future.
To buy it. Again, I'm fine with this one, just in general, just so both people at home as well as the board have an idea to say, well, you know, we could use it for this or not, and it's, it's basically to me a justification for us to not purchase it, if that makes sense.
Well, one of the things, and I do want to assure you that we do do that, and that's part of the due diligence to send it to the different departments, so if they find a use for it, they will let us know, and then we would come out and come back to you and say, there is a u, a possible use. If everyone comes back and says, no, they see no use, or their department would have none, because the things we're looking at is land banking for water, if, is there a need for a sewer, a new sewer pump station somewhere around that area? So we do do that due diligence.
I think I'd probably just like to see a little more, or some type of, something formal for us, even if it's nothing else to say, potentially, here's one option we could use it for.
Open space.
Open space, correct, exactly. And if open space is the same thing that pops up every time, then I think that.
No more open space.
Correct, I think that also gives us our answer of, well, everyone else passed on it, and the only, the only plus to it would be open space, and we're deciding that we want to use our tax line differently. So, again, nothing, nothing very formal. Thank you very much for obliging my nonsense.
Any other discussion or comments?
Do we need to close the public hearing?
Yep, we're done, no us, no in the audience.
Nope.
So I will declare the hearing now closed.
I would, if I may, before we leave that subject, I would also invite the board, because you do get this information ahead of time, to review the parcel and take a look at it, and also let our office know if you see some uses or have some questions that you would like us to explore.
Thank you, Ms. Craver. So we will now move on to our seven o'clock, and that is Northeast Energy Center LLC. I'm sorry.
We have to, yeah, we have to. So I make my, to close the public hearing.
Second.
It was a late night, I'm jumping the gun.
That's okay. In your, in your effort to move things along.
I try to move things along.
Motion. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Now, so we close the public hearing, now we have to take a vote on allowing it to be removed from sixty-one A.
Correct, motion for the board of selectmen not to exercise our right of first refusal.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, any discussion? No, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
No, thank all of you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, talking to your microphones, please, we can't hear you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
It's the first time anyone's ever told me speak louder. Usually it's the opposite.
People usually tell me to shut up, so.
Basically, yeah. So we will now move to seven PM, Northeast Energy Center LLC update.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Craver.
Boris Brevinov, managing editor, member for Liberty Energy Trust LLC, is here to provide an update regarding the Northeast Energy Center project. NEC is on track and moving, moving forward. In an effort to continue development efforts in Charlton, the project team is completing an updated analysis to be submitted to the Massachusetts Energy Facility Sitting Board. Following their November thirteenth public hearing, the analysis determined that an alternate site along Route one sixty-nine is the optimal location for the facility. This site is in an area with an existing gas-fired power plant, active industrial use, and a large solar array. He has been scheduled for seven PM, and he is here.
Thank you. And thank you for your time, and we also will try to be brief to answer questions, that is a state jurisdictional process, so town administrator is exactly right, and in about ten days, we will have public hearing in town of Charlton, but conducted by a state regulatory body called Energy Facility Sitting Board. And as we promised, we would like to continue to stay in touch with you and to preempt any difficult questions, and to learn any questions from community, and try to build on an input and feedback from community. And today, I'm joined with two engineers, Jay and Aaron. Would you introduce yourself?
My name's Jay Gamble, I'm with Western and Sampson Engineers.
Aaron Givony with Bond Brothers, general contractor.
And just from a background and a context, a context point of view, Western and Sampson are doing a lot of owners engineering for this project. So any issues, you know, they're local too, it's relatively easy to reach. And Aaron, it's Bond Brothers, it's another Massachusetts company, and they most likely will be performing all the construction on this. So if there will be any concerns, any complaints, you can skip me and go straight to these guys. And you remember, we had a public hearing mid-November last year, and we presented two potential locations for the project. And same today, not to take all the thunder from a state process, but we also felt we don't want to blindside anybody, we want to give as much heads up as possible. And to show you the picture, kind of why we decided to proceed with the site, which is off Route one sixty-nine, right near Income property, and hopefully to get additional support just from a start point of view. And I totally agree, the picture does, tells a lot in this picture. So the title usually for these pictures, we call it, it's an energy corridor. So what you have, you have first, obviously, transportation corridor, one sixty-nine. You have right on top of this, electric, high voltage electric transmission line. So before, five minutes ago, you talk about distribution lines, so this is an existing right of way, and high voltage transmission line. Same, Aaron, if you can point, there is also a Tennessee gas pipeline. So it's existing pipeline that goes to the Millennium Power Station. Why we decided to proceed with this option after a lot of analysis, engineering, and consideration, because it complements this location. One, it's less land disturbance. On the previous, on Route twenty, when we reviewed it, we would have to go through MIPA, because disturbance of land was much bigger. So we will be above threshold of Massachusetts Environment Protection Act. In this case, you can see we're right under the solar field. We're kind of carving ourselves in into this concept, which is, on one side, kind of probably an old traditional way to be a good neighbor, to fit in, and from a modern energy perspective, this forms a microgrid. So this forms a more efficient energy use and more resilient setup, because everybody will be somewhat helping each other. That I will try to explain. So in this picture, right along one sixty-nine, somewhat in the middle is Income facility. And Income is one of, one of the leading fiber optic providers, which is native business, native industry for Charlton, South Bridge Two, one of the core businesses. And for this business to be successful, because it's fiber optic, they really have to bake sand, so it's energy-intensive business. So in this case, this business would be able to benefit from natural gas supply, and this business could be positioned to benefit from electric supply from our project, which improves redundancy of the business, and frankly, also reduces the rate in a meaningful way for this facility. So this is helpful from Income, and frankly, helpful to us, point of view, provide additional ancillary use for the facility. Another opportunity for this project to be a good neighbor is Millennium Power Plant. More and more, because of deployment solar fields, additional renewables, power pool calls on power plants to run during peak environment, during peak time, which could be called polar vortex, could be bomb cyclone, could be difficult environment when gas, when the gas power plants need to reach for backup fuel. So in this case, this project could become, position itself to be a backup fuel supply for Millennium Power Station. More and more, these power plants being utilized, less of a base load because of presence of renewables, renewables don't really have any OpEx, so it's only CapEx as long as you deploy it. So this, from a local point of view, from a broader point of view, the project also will be serving other state utilities. And based on cooperation with the town, town administrator selectman, we're trying to be sure that the project will provide tangible benefits for its community, and project will provide tangible benefits for the state. So this is one of projects, that's what being called now NPS, non-pipeline solutions project. So they allow more efficiently to utilize pipeline capacity and effectively create kind of a strategy, what people call energy storage. So during summertime, this facility liquefies natural gas. The pipeline is already in place, and this is a non-combustible, so this is not a conversion of energy. This is literally your refrigerator process, only cold temperatures, so which shrinks gas by a factor of six hundred times, making it very potent storage facilities. Doesn't require chemicals, doesn't require going for materials. So it's kind of homemade, because homemade, because history of LNG actually started in Massachusetts, so it is somewhat a homemade product in Massachusetts. And the teams that we assembled, we have two representatives during public hearing. You will see a little bit more of us, few other players involved, and believe it or not, except me, everybody have Massachusetts background. I have two, so you will also see Preload, Preload is a Massachusetts company, Cashman, that's been involved in quite a bit of construction. They will be working on a storage tank, Chart. Chart is New Hampshire, Massachusetts region, another company. They are global company, so they provide state-of-the-art heat exchangers. So that's a cooling element that will be deployed in this process. North Star Industries, which is changing the name, so they will show up on a public hearing at the different names, same company, but the name is odd in. Pierce Atwood and Epsilon, Epsilon is our environmental engineering company, and somebody can ask, why is it taking so long to engineer? To some extent, thanks to high Massachusetts standards. Environmental engineering does that at any receptor level, effectively, noise from the plant should not be audible. So we have to some reading of noise, ambient noise, we have to do wind reading of noise, we have to agree with the state where to put the receptors at any possible receiving stations, some of them short-term, some of them long-term. They like to check these receptors at 2:00 in the morning on Saturday, when you don't have leaves. So it will be cold morning on Saturday, no traffic, no leaves, so ambient noise is really low. So the view that it gives the strangest background for the noise. Same relative to visual, so the site and we'll have pictures, we'll leave these pictures with you. Will be not really, I mean, it's visible when you drive right in front of it, but it will be not visible from left and right. So when you pass it, it does look like a big gathering station. I have two, so visual noise, air impact. So plant will have state of the art technology coming from Siemens on the drive. So with all meeting or exceeding every requirement, state or federal. So we comply with both state and federal requirements. We hope that the project will be attractive and start to prove this concept of microgrid. The project will start serving its immediate neighbors on gas and electric services. We hope it will expand. We still like the town idea to create a modern municipal utility for these services. We'll continue to support this idea. And so far, we feel it is one of the projects that's supported by the state, supported by the government, supported by the energy administration of the state, that the project will really complement every renewable development. That's why it's also coupled with solar. So it is, and that's why it's got its name, Northeast Energy Center. So that is the choice of the site. We also went and updated choice of the tank, also based on input from the previous public hearing. You might recall in our previous public hearing, we talked about 10 tanks, smaller tanks, but single containment tanks. In this case, the project is moving forward with a full containment tank. Full containment tanks, exactly the tanks that you will see in Boston, Springfield, Hopkinton, kind of Berkshire, you name it. So it's Berkshire actually single containment, but the rest are double, full containment tank. So in this case, there is one tank inside another tank. So it provides additional safety, really concrete safety, because it's made from pressurized concrete. So in this case, it's protected from any projectiles. In this case, if there is a hole in the tank and liquid escapes, it just escapes into an outer tank. It does not go out and it does not create any issues and any impact. We like the size of the tank because it comparable to oil tank that Millennium Power Plant has at this point. They have about 1.3 million oil tank on site. So in this case, people don't need to run on oil, then can run on natural gas, which is obviously from NOx, SOx point of view, particles point of view, about 90% cleaner, from CO2 point of view, it's about 50% cleaner. So there are some tangible benefits in Massachusetts and obviously with the cold winters and cold snaps, becoming more and more important. Same, this is just for information processes because of state jurisdiction, but same, we like the feedback. As you can see, we keep improving on the project, a lot of effort went into wetland delineation. Wetland delineation and Enrate filing will be done with Conservation Commission. So it will be most likely filed tomorrow, so it's completed. Same, there was a small isolated wetland spot. By Massachusetts standard, you have to visit it three times with a group of scientists to be sure that the size of this spot is measured, it's on the maps, it's appropriate. So all this work being done, so it will be filed tomorrow. And we wanted to touch base, get any questions. And frankly, most important, kind of to continue constructive environment and active dialogue between all the sites involved.
So for me, Mr. Revna, I would say thank you and for pointing out that they're all from Massachusetts except for you. I think your very strong Connecticut accent is
gives it to everyone here.
I, I have two questions myself. One is, is it adjacent to Income or is it actually on Income property? And my other question is the size. And I'm not, I'm just gonna ask at the same time. I know you will anyway, but we're pleased very closely with our planning board. I appreciate very much the transparency and the extra effort to also give full presentations like this to our board. This is their area of expertise and their authority and I know that, I'm hoping that you will work as closely with them. That would be in line with the effort you're making to show this board and the public all of this transparency. So I appreciate that. And if you could just let me know, is it Income property, adjacent to Income property and the size of the
All of the both, so it is Income property that we acquired.
Okay.
So we have an option right now on this property and that this continues to Income.
Okay.
And we like because it's a single land owner, Income continues to own the solar field, which we also like. Solar field on this picture, it's hard to see, but it's an elevated part. So most of the people will see mostly solar field versus our facility. So it's a higher ground in this case. And yes, we in touch with planning commission and we touch frankly with all the stakeholders. We in touch with fire department, all emergency response and all three towns. One, we like to doing it, we like to stay in touch, be required frankly to.
Do you know the anticipated size?
Yes, it's about 12 acre size, right Jay?
The site proper, yes, but the developed site is about, is about 10 acres.
The inside defense will be smaller, total acreage of the site is around 12.
Okay, and for me, I'm looking forward to you working closely with our planning board on this. Anyone, any members of board have questions? Mr. Revna?
Just, just to reiterate, could you tell us when the public hearing is with the, the state-run public hearing?
The public hearing will be on May 29th at 7:00.
Where will the public hearing?
At the school, it's middle school.
John Middle School.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chairman and Mr. Revna, I definitely appreciate you coming in and talking about this. I know there are tangible benefits to the state and I'm speaking completely selfishly as a member of the board for tangible benefits to the residents of Charlton, because the state needs this perhaps more than we do. So my question to you is, what tangible benefits are there to the local residents that quite honestly may be inconvenienced for one way or another by this?
I mean, every business or every development, you exactly right, kind of is always have two sides, like a coin, right? A, the project, I mean, as we discussed, the project will, let's put it this way, right? Right now, a lot of inconvenience is already in place. You have high voltage transmission line is not much use. And you have one of the biggest in the nation gas pipeline, it's actually two lines, that also fly over Charlton. So it's a classic, little bit the case of flyover community, when you have already heavy energy infrastructure in place, but that does not serve the town. So what we want to rebalance this approach and we do want that the town will start to take advantage of this infrastructure. We are taking advantage of this pipeline, we are tapping into this pipeline, interstate pipeline. We are taking advantage of existing energy infrastructure. And we believe that not only Income, but other businesses will start to benefit of this. If you check, for example, Massachusetts Energy Department website, it would say that benefits from switching from electric heating to natural gas, about $3,500 difference for one heating season between electric versus natural gas. So this is effectively cost of not doing business or cost of when major infrastructure bypass you, but doesn't provide any benefits. Thirty-five hundred for average Charlton residents in an annual budget. It's a sizable amount of money in general. So we are not solving all the issues, you exactly right. So it is certain energy specific problem, project. But this project will start to provide day one, certain benefits for Charlton businesses first and then hopefully for Charlton communities. So one, it will start opening access to natural gas. Number two, it will improve electric resilience of this community. So the project would self-generate, the project can do block start generation, so it can restart its microgrid, can restart the community, is number two. Three, the project will support existing business. Without this backup service, value of Millennium Power Station will be diminishing. So the station still will be there, but it will be not making money, it would not be able to pay tax, property tax. So in these circumstances, we do feel that this new updated design is more open to community. So we somewhat answering your question.
Which brings up the obligatory follow-up when we think around financial forecasting. Have we done that yet to figure out what the potential income from this is? I mean, do we know?
We have, we started the process, we provided part of this process. So we will be compliant property tax payer for this facility. And but obviously we also want to be a good neighbor and useful neighbor, not just paying your fair share of dues, but also useful neighbor and
Which we appreciate by the way, so. Believe me, I grill, or people will learn, I grill everybody like this, so it works so well.
You should see him before the meeting starts.
Oh yeah. So then, I know why you're doing the, the next question, but I'd like to hear it from you because I'm sure someone's gonna bring this up on May 29. As part of this, of the application to the state, you've asked for multiple zoning waivers. And personally, I have, I have strong concerns about that. Again, I know why you're doing it. However, if it's not zoned properly, the fact that you're bypassing our boards and asking for a petition from the state, can you convince me that that was the right way to go as opposed to either going through a formal site plan review? Which by the way, I should say, after speaking informally, members of the planning board, they've all been very impressed with you, with you and with us to partner. However, having read that application and seeing, basically because of cost and potential legal challenges, I'm more than a little concerned that you're petitioning the state as opposed to basically bypassing local jurisdiction. So again, out of fairness to you, I wanted to ask here.
Oh, it's a good question.
Yeah, so.
It is a good question.
And that's my last one, I promise, so go ahead.
No, actually, we prefer questions in a kind of constructive environment when it's
I'd rather people ask, ask them now, not later on and
Not later on.
Exactly.
It is, it would be an exception not to ask state for zoning, zoning preemption effectively. A hundred percent of such projects doing this zoning preemption and usually it's done for three reasons. A, you want to be sure that you have enough expertise and experts who are able to deal with this. Actually, only few states have boards, as Massachusetts boards. In other cases, same, it would be like in some places where you build facilities like in Carolina, they don't really have such. So in Massachusetts, so it would be different case. In Massachusetts, the view was that when people building this facility, giving it to one planning board or single town planning board, it's a lot of technical issues to view. It's a lot of expertise to view. You have to have enough gas expertise, you have to enough electric expertise, you have to have enough civil expertise. So in this case, state came to conclusion that it's easy to centralize this expertise and then it's easy to enforce. Because it's not just to do it once, but it's also being able to check the standards, being able to keep up the standards, being able to review and being able to continue with this expertise. Doing it in every town would be frankly cost prohibitive from a state point of view, would be relatively hard. So one, probably honest answer about this is just level of expertise and depth of expertise. Cause when we talking about Energy Facility Board, it's not just Energy Facility Board, but it's also DPU, Department of Public Utilities, Safety Departments of the State. So it's a lot of inter-agencies that are involved and participate in this process. Airboard and everybody else. So it's one, it's level of expertise. Second, you exactly right, from a liabilities point of view, you almost want to have sovereign, like a state that is reviewing it. So that's, and this is, just to be sure, it's not our rule, it's not rule that we invented, but every facility, this class is going through the similar process with Energy Facility Siting Board. Also to assure and streamline, to be sure that we continue to be committed to a process with the town, to be sure that we view to the citizen of the town. In this case, we also suggested that we will be going through voluntary zoning process with the town and
Which is greatly appreciated by the way, so.
And thank you for this. And I think you will see even on environmental review and other aspects that we are going, we hope that we will help to set a higher standard. So if kind of engineered stuff materialize, we do believe it would be the cleanest facility with the lowest amount of noise, pollution, emission and everything else built in the state or out of the state. So this one, if things pin out, would be the first hybrid system. So it will run like a Prius. So other Prius systems like, like an SUV, this will be running like a Prius. So the gas turbine will run at a constant level. All the variations will be done by electric motor. So it will be running at the lowest emission, at the highest efficiency. And electric motor will be absorbing any ups and downs or any variations that usually the gas turbine absorbs. So this would be the first one done this way in the United States and in North America. It's been done in Europe, so from this point, been done in other places of the world, but in North America, it will be the first one.
My two final brief requests, and they would mean a lot to me personally, was A, as soon as you get your financial impact numbers, please distribute them via the board. And two, it's of the utmost importance to me and I'm sure to other members of the board, that any neighbors impacted in the vicinity, not just now butters, but anybody who's even close to that, there's gotta be a good working relationship there, because I don't wanna hear, I don't wanna hear email, I mean, I don't wanna get emails, I don't wanna get phone calls saying they're hearing a buzz, there's too much traffic or whatever. So whether it's individual knocking on doors saying, what can we do to make this better? That would go a long way with me personally.
Okay.
That being said, I'm good, thank you for the time.
Through the chair, Mr. Revna.
Just a couple of questions. So your, your plant would make Millennium more viable, correct?
More economically viable.
More economically viable, because I, you know, I'm aware of the challenges that they face right now. And then the, the way it sounded is that their emergency fuel supply, which is currently diesel or oil, that would go away in their emergency fuel supply would be your fuel supply.
Litvin natural gas.
Okay. I think that's a win-win.
Anything else? Any other questions? Is noble, excuse me?
No, thank you.
I didn't have a question first, thank you for the presentation, thank you for the visual. Do you, what do you see like five years down the road, any kind of expansion planned? Or is it what we see, is this the footprint?
I mean, energy sector is an interesting kind of sector. We like this field overall, because as you know, energy storage, people view it as a holy grail. So this is effectively somewhat proven energy storage concept. Same as you, everybody's thinking, moving towards 2030, 2050 requirements, how continue to be greener, how to reduce environmental footprint. So there are new technologies coming in, that's why we frankly excited that it's an energy zone, so it's kind of very handy. And we think that we will continue to work on technologies. So I don't think that it would be just scale increase or something like this, but probably will be coming up as an ideas, how to make things more efficient, how to make community benefits more tangible and how to, how to make environment more sustainable. So our next step, we will be checking if we can interconnect it with solar field also too. So we will try really that it will live and think like an energy center. We don't feel that energy will be, our energy infrastructure will be just spreading around. Probably it will be more smarter, more responsive, using additional fuels. We are part of, we have a partnership in National Renewable Energy Laboratory. So we continue to work with them to see how to adopt the best technologies. So from a practical point of view, it will be one of the most interesting energy parks, kind of outside of California. I mean, California is going its own interesting way, but this would be probably one of newer technological solutions that exist on the east coast. And frankly helpful, we want Charlton also kind of to be proud that it's also place of innovation. So you probably hear that in Massachusetts offshore wind, for example, becoming very attractive. Same, we looking into these solutions too. But even offshore wind cannot displace high oil consumption that is happening in Massachusetts. And these type of projects, they do actually displace oil consumption being in energy storage. So it's a long answer to your question, but we probably bet less on scale.
Is that footprint changing in the next five, 10 years?
We don't expect.
Or anywhere in Charlotte?
It might rearrange a little bit itself, but it probably will not change. So we don't expect the footprint to change.
Ms. Faver?
I have a comment and a question. My comment is, just for those, I believe all of you are aware, the planning board has submitted the paperwork to become an intervenor. So they will be intimately involved and guiding this process. And I know that you mentioned earlier that people should reach out to the planning board. You also have on your agenda, under number five of new business, the planning board will be coming for you. And this is the project And this is the project they will be asking for the board of selectmen to add a representative to. So they are reaching out to each of the departments to make sure that Boris and his team has a liaison through the planning board to all the departments, so.
Thank you, Ms. Craver.
And I have one question. You show on that, and this is the first time I've seen the site, you show where the millennium connects to the Tennessee line. Can you tell us, just point, follow your finger where you're going to connect to the Tennessee line? How are you getting there? Are you following the road, or are you going the back country?
So our, right now, what's filed as our preferred route is a location that will tap on to the existing lateral to the power plant, roughly here, run to the east of the power plant and down to one sixty-nine, and we'll be filing our utility permit application with Mass DOT to run within there, within there right away, then our, and then if we get turned down for that, we do have an alternate that will go, that would run same, same location here, but would cross through here into the west of Incom, and then into the facility.
Through the chair. How crowded is the, is the real estate on the, on the shoulder of one sixty-nine? I believe we have our water lines in there, and I, we also have a sewer line, or Southbridge has a sewer line in there.
Well, there's, there's the two, there's the.
I mean, good thing that it was Western Sampson who designed these water lines.
Right, there's a sixteen-inch cooling water line that comes from Southbridge to the plant, and then a ten-inch return. And then you have your, your water line that's in there too. So we're, we're right now actually in the process of designing the best location for, for that gas line. But we're, we're hoping that we can get, stay off of the edge of the pavement.
Okay.
So right along this grassy area here.
Yep, no problem. Just in the right way, that's all. Thank you.
Yep.
Mister. I don't know why I say I'm gonna stop talking. Actually, this isn't entirely, is there a reason why this board doesn't have intervene, or did not apply for intervenor status? And is there anything that would be a negative for us applying as a board, as intervenor status? Again, I know the planning board is, but I, I'm curious as to why the former iteration of this board did not pursue it.
I believe that the town is allowed to have one intervener.
Oh, okay.
Okay. You can't have multiple, multiple interveners in this. And we didn't choose who the interveners were, the, the state chose who was going to be the interveners. I think the previous board start process was that the planning board has the tools and the expertise in being the intervenor, and that if they, you know, and also on public hearings, that it would be a perfect spot for them.
Oh, thank you, Mr. McGrath. Yeah, if we only have one planning board, absolutely makes sense, so now I'm officially done.
Jean.
Yeah, I don't know if that's actually.
Come up and use the microphone.
This is a short thing about being the intervenor. We had to apply. We sent them a letter to be applied. We were not asked. We asked to be.
No, no, I know, I know you asked to be the intervenor.
Of course, you represent yourself, not the town.
They, they only allow one, one entity.
Wasn't aware of that.
Yes. They, they only allow one entity, and there were numerous people and entities that wanted to be an intervenor, and the state is the one that chose who was going to be the interveners.
I think there's some private residents that are.
I'm, I'm not sure. I don't know what the list is, but I know that the state is the person, they are the entity that chooses the interveners.
But only one board?
I believe that they, in the town, they would only use, allow one board.
In which case, planning board is the.
Oh, makes complete sense, absolutely. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. McGrath?
No.
Anyone else? Well, I again would then thank you. I appreciate the, I'll use the word proactive. Proactive transparency and effort to be a good neighbor to Charlton, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We finished the scheduled appointments. We'll move on to new business. The first time on a new business is the fiscal year twenty fuel procurement bid award. Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir. Charlton participated in the FY twenty joint fuel procurement for the purchase of propane, gas, diesel, and heating oil through the Central Mass Planning, Regional Planning Commission. Staff also sought bids from local providers who, who did not bid on the CMR PC procurement. Bids were submitted by Peterson Oil, Farrell Gas, and Charlton Oil, who is our current FY nineteen provider of heating oil and propane. I would recommend the board enter into contracts for the fall, overall lowest pricing with the following vendors. Heating oil, Charlton Oil, for two dollars and forty cents per gallon, May through October, two dollars and forty-one cents per gallon, November through April fix. FY nineteen, this year's price is two dollars and fifty cents, so it's a reduction in the heating oil price. Propane, Charlton Oil, a dollar forty per gallon. The FY nineteen is a dollar fifty, so it's again a reduction of ten cents a gallon for oil, for propane. Unleaded gas, Peterson Oil, two dollars point zero nine zero nine per gallon, super, super unleaded, two dollars point two four oh nine a gallon. The FY cost for this year was two point six. Diesel, Peterson Oil, for two dollars and point four four eight four per gallon, and this year's cost is two dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Mr. Chairman, motion as submitted. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Noble?
How many bids did we get? How many people applied?
Three. Peterson, Farrell, and Charlton Oil.
So just these three, the same as last time? How are we reaching out to, to companies?
We are doing it through a joint procurement, through the Regional Planning Agency is one that submitted, and we also reached out to local, which we had received one from Charlton Oil. So there were only two, Peterson and Farrell, from the regional planning, and we reached out to Charlton Oil also.
Okay. And Peterson Oil, where are they located?
Mr.?
Yeah, Worcester. I know, he's right off of Crescent Street.
I was gonna say.
Right over by the old morgue, well, still the current morgue in construction, soon to be the old morgue in construction.
Yeah, he has those big tanks still over there.
And if, if you look at the backup documentation, you can see the bids.
Yep. I would just ask that going forward in the future, if we could try and reach out to local businesses as much as possible, so that we're spending our money locally and keeping it in the community?
That's why we did reach out to Charlton.
I, I see that.
Pretty cool.
Any other comments? Ms. Craver, do we need to move on the bids?
Did you already voted and?
I, I motioned all of them as submitted.
Move second, and then we have a discussion, so there's no further conversation. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Next item will be the Code Red contract award. Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir. The contract with our current emergency notification system, otherwise known as reverse nine-one-one, ends in August. Code Red has been the provider. After reviewing performance, cost of services, and getting feedback from staff that utilize the system, such as dispatch, fire, and police, it is a consensus to enter into another three-year contract with Code Red for the reduced price of five thousand dollars per year. Please see the attached quotes and recommendation. I recommend the board sign another three-year contract with Code Red.
Thank you, Ms. Craver. I have, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I'm hoping you can answer or get an answer for the board. In the past, the town has had the option of utilizing the nine-one-one versus nine-one-one system for non-emergency purposes, if the system is not already in use for an emergency purpose. So in other words, if it was in use, we couldn't, we couldn't take over for a town meeting notice. However, if it was not in use, that it would have been made available to the town to perhaps call every resident to notify them of town meeting or some other matter. Can you please check and find out if that will be available to us, to use in that manner?
My understanding is that we've had that option. We use it as a, as a sign-in, more than just putting information out. So we check with residents so they can opt in, rather than getting notifications like for town meetings and things like that. So I will get that exact procedure for you.
If you would, please, and then if you would, I would like to see something go on the town website for an opt-in.
So non-emergency uses.
I'd like to publicize this. I would like every resident to know they have the option to opt in, to get notices about town meeting. I think it's one tool that we might have at our disposal to increase turnout at election day, town meetings. And if they have to opt in, which is always preferable, to disseminate that information as widely and publicly as possible, so they know it's available. And then if you could follow up with the, the number of opt-ins at some point, would be appreciated.
All right, dear Mr. Chairman.
I make a motion that we, we renew the contract with Code Red.
Second.
Up second.
Motion is second. Is there any other conversation or comments?
Just one.
Ms. Noble?
I see that we are saving money, just so the folks at home know. It's five thousand dollars a year, down from six thousand three hundred and nine.
A nice savings.
Yes, a very nice savings over the course of three years.
Thank you, Ms. Noble.
You're welcome.
Any other conversation or comments, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda will be the request for a common victual license, this is coffee and food, for George's Pizza Three, Charlton. Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir. Attached is a request for a common victual license, coffee and food license for Anise Kahari, George's Pizza Number Three, Charlton, located at nine City Depot Road. He has completed the proper paperwork needed for this request, and is recommended that the board approve the request.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
They make great pizza.
Yeah, they really do.
They make really great pizza. They're my go-to on Tuesday nights.
Good to know.
You just lost a bunch of votes, it's her family, but it's not.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Number four, under new business, request for special alcoholic beverage license, Alan R. Turnell, Knights of Columbus. Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir. Attached is a request from Alan Turnell, on behalf of Saint Joseph's Council, Knights of Columbus, to hold a night at the races, including the Kentucky Derby at Saint Joseph's Church at ten H Putnam Road Extension in the parish hall on October nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, from five thirty P M to eleven thirty P M. The application was reviewed and approved by the Police Department, Fire Department, and Building Commissioner with no stipulations. Per the board's policy, the license, if approved, should be issued for two additional days, which is to allow delivery the day before the event and for pickup after, the day after the event, with no sales allowed on those days. I would recommend the board approve the special license as requested, with the dates on the license to be October eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, through October twentieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any conversation, discussion, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Move on to number six. Dudley Charlton Regional School District Liaison, Deb has been meeting with them. Ms. Craver?
No, you skipped over one, dude.
Planning Board Invitation?
Yeah.
Oh, forgive me? Let me put the glasses on. All right, I'm putting them back on.
Oh, that's fantastic.
We'll back up then. Number five, Planning Board Invitation, Local Review Committee for LNG Terminal Designation of Members. Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir. Attached is a letter from the planning board stating that the LNG terminal proposed by Northeast Energy LLC for its preferred site on Route one sixty-nine is likely to have significant impacts on Charlton. While the project is exempt from local approval, the proponent has committed to engaging with the community in an open and transparent process as the project works its way through the Department of Public Utilities sitting process. The planning board discussed the idea of creating a local review committee with the applicant and received strong encouragement to do so. They believe that this is in the best interest of Charlton to create a multi-disciplinary committee of members of local boards and the town's professional staff to thoroughly vet the application to protect public health and safety and minimize environmental impacts. The planning board is inviting committees and department heads to designate a representative to participate in this process. They anticipate monthly meetings at a time and place that enables the greatest participation. This will be a working committee that will review plans and technical memorandum on the application and meet with experts to assess the impacts of the project. Their intent is that the committee provide balanced information to the planning board, who will provide the board with critical information to present to the DPU to help shape the project to help the least impact and greatest benefit to the town. They have set the introductory session for six thirty P M on Wednesday, June twelfth. What are the board's wishes?
Thank you.
That may get changed.
I was just, that's why I was raising my eyes to bill.
Oh, I was about to nominate you, sorry.
You asked so many questions.
So with that being said, I'm assuming obviously other elected boards, if they want to participate under their own authority, would nominate someone to participate. Various department heads, I would assume, would also be voluntary, but would hopefully participate. Any comments from the board, questions from Ms. Vincent, please hear?
Anybody wanna do it?
One thing I will point out, I warned you about my schedule when you decided not to make a chair. So I will, I would not be available.
I think I'd be available only one day a week. Jean, any chance that you wouldn't meet on a Wednesday? That's my, that's my dinner night with the kids. If, if you, like, if it's on Thursdays, I could probably do it.
We're open to it. We're trying to see what's a good thing for everybody.
If other members don't want to do it, I would be happy to volunteer with the knowledge that I may not be able to actually do it, but depending upon time.
May I make a suggestion?
Please.
Perhaps if you have a member and an alternate of the board, then the two of you could kind of tag team if someone can't.
I would, I would be willing to do it for an alternate.
Sure.
So is there a motion and a second to make Mr. Borowski the primary and Mr. McGrath the alternate? Representative for board?
Second.
You guys enjoyed that too much.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I will keep the glasses on. Number six, now, for real. Dudley Charlton Regional School District Liaison, and Deb has been meeting with them. Ms. Craver, if you will?
Ms. Bedwack asked this item to be on the agenda. I have no information.
So through the chair, after our last meeting, I was asked to reach out to Superintendent Nash by Slock Manobel, and she informed me that she was, had been the liaison, I guess. And I just, I, my understanding is it should be some kind of an official process, and I just wanted to make it official if, if it's still needed or.
Yeah, and I think that was outreach from the budget meetings. Is that correct or?
That, that would be correct, and I actually was not even told this was gonna be on the agenda. I didn't know I was gonna be asked to speak on it.
You don't have to speak.
No, just, just trying to find the history of it, so we can figure out if we need, do we still need a liaison person or?
I think it's a, if you, if you humor me, I think it's a good idea there. Once upon a time, I practically lived in each of the schools in this town, and at one point was very close with all the principals as well. And I think the value that that brought of having a member of the board that close to the schools was immense, and that you're doing it, I think, is wonderful. And if this board should choose to make an actual motion and second to make it official, I think that would be a wonderful thing.
I'm, I would ask for some clarity, because generally it's been the town administrator and the superintendent meeting. I know I was out and Selectman Noble stepped in. Generally, it's the member of the board of selectmen meeting with a member of the school committee, and then I, I meet, or whoever is in the seat, meets with the superintendent. So I would not recommend that you begin a process where one of the board members start meeting with the superintendent.
So I guess.
But you could certainly do whatever you wanna do.
That wasn't really the recommendation. I was, again, trying to find out the history behind it, because I really don't remember us doing any kind of votes to appoint anyone or, or, again, clarify the process of procedures.
Right, and I think, and it's not to, to supplant the town administrator's role in meeting with the schools. I don't think you ever knew that I was living in those buildings as often as I was, but. I don't think you ever knew that I was living in those buildings as often as I was, but to have a resident of Charlton who lives in the community, who knows the neighborhoods that well, that close in the streets, and the teachers, to, it's more to supplement and work together, not to replace. And I think it's nice to have a member of the board also be involved.
May I make a suggestion? Thank you. Just like we have a member for the LNG committee and an alternate, perhaps we could have the town administrator and an alternate for those occasions when she's unable to attend due to other obligations.
I don't know.
Just a thought.
Attend. So the goal, that's my, that's what I'm trying to highlight, I guess, is what, why was this done? So you were stepping in because the town administrator was unable to? I did not know.
Okay.
And so, if I may, when I was hanging out at schools, I'll put it that way. It was more or less because I wanted to know, hang out. It's not that I always hang out time with you, hang out at the schools, but...
That's good to know.
As a parent, whose children go to these schools, I wanted to know the people in the buildings. I wanted to know the principals, the vice principals, the teachers, the athletic directors. I wanted to know what was going on in the hallways. As much as I know you work with them, that firsthand knowledge of what was going on in the buildings that my kids are in, I found a great value in. And so I would hope that that's the same kind of relationship that not only you develop, but that also a representative of this board, and if not, every member would want to know what's going on and have that close relationship with the schools.
Mm-hmm. Generally have.
I'm not sure what we're doing, to be honest.
Okay.
Me neither.
My question is, is, my understanding is, it's not, thank you, is it necessary?
Is it, so, so was the necessity previous to this was because we, Ms. Craver was out, and I think, I believe that Ms. Noble was working or was involved with all of the budget stuff, not, not that I wasn't, I couldn't attend. So I guess Deb stepped into the lurch at that point in time, threw no direction from the board or myself. But is, is it a thing that needs to be continued with the town administrator back, number one? And number two, what are the boards, you know, through the chair, the boards wishes to have, you know, a board member involved with the, you know, with the school committee slash superintendent all, all year long, rather than just budget season? So that's, I guess that's a question for...
So thank you for clarifying because I, again, I didn't, I was unaware of how that came to be. I personally think we should all be as involved with the school department, what, you know, as we can be. I don't know that we actually need a real official liaison, but I leave that up to you. Again, I just brought it to the attention because I was uncomfortable acting as a liaison without the entire board being aware of what I was doing, so.
As long as it's just people talking as, as individual members, I never have an issue with that about anything, quite frankly. I mean, but if we ever need a formal representative, they say, hey, can you send somebody? Sure, let's have a quick conversation. But outside of that, yeah, I mean, people can do whatever they want.
Generally, I'll facilitate the meetings, bring the information back.
I'd stress my...
That's clear enough.
You good?
I'm good.
Do we take any action on this then or not?
I don't think so.
Doesn't sound like it.
No, we've had some clarity. I am looking for something I do not see.
I had no information on it. I didn't do a memo.
Okay. In that case, we will move on to number seven, under new business, Sex Offender Bylaw Committee. I ask for this to be on the agenda. I understand we will be having goals and objectives meetings. This is one item I felt deserved to be moved or acted upon sooner rather than later, especially because, as Ms. Bedwack and I have learned, working on committees such as Solar and research that's involved can take an extraordinary amount of time. We did at one point in time, if you'd humor me, we had a bylaw, a sex offender bylaw. I had researched it, and it was literally comprised of nothing more than bylaws that had already been enacted throughout other communities across the Commonwealth and approved by the Attorney General. It was all fine. I had checked it. It actually, you know, had been approved all the way up to or passed muster, I should say, all the way to the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is one court side of the United States Supreme Court. So it passed muster, we passed it at town meeting. I believe that that, at one point in time, due to certain requests, it was put back on a town meeting warrant and removed. I was never in favor of that action. I would like to see this board, hopefully, move on establishing a new bylaw committee, one for sex offenders, so that we could have members of this board, who may want to volunteer, members at large from the community, perhaps members from the police department, come together, as we did on Solar, and do the research and come back to town meeting with a viable, I hope, and strong sex offender bylaws for our community, if you guys would humor me.
Mr. Chairman, you get, you have my full support, and I would make a motion that we begin the process to create a sex offender bylaw committee.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about making up makeup of the board, how many members of the board, how many members from the community at large? Mr. Borowski?
I would offer forth, Mr. Chairman, knowing it's your, your idea, and I mean that in a very nice way, that maybe for our next meeting, that you come up with a proposal of what maybe you did last time, what makes sense.
That's fine. I have ideas right now.
Shocker.
For me, I would like to mimic the Solar, in effect. I'd like to have two members of the Board of Selectmen, a member from the police department, two, three members from the community at large. That's what I envisioned, you'd have a five, a five or six member board, five member board. If you have two, two and one, two selectmen, two citizens, and a police chief, or a police representative, it'd be five members.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Noble?
I'd also like to recommend that a member of this committee either have a background in civil rights or is a human rights officer.
So if I may ask, who would we have available to us if no one from the community at large fit that bill? Would it be a police chief?
I'm a human rights officer.
Okay, so you're going to be on it, then?
Absolutely.
Okay. I, of course, would throw myself out there. If not, and if somebody else wants to be on it, I'll join as a citizen at large.
So through the chair, maybe if we vote on makeup of the committee, and then we can, we can, then, then, then after we get that done, we can post, we can appoint our two members.
There you go.
Excellent, Mr. McGrath.
So right now, I have two Board of Selectmen, one representative from the PD, and two citizens at large.
Thank you, Ms. Craver.
I will make a motion that that be the makeup of the committee.
Second.
Do we have to create the committee first? No?
This is the makeup.
Yeah, create makeup.
Either way. Yeah, I mean, that's fine, either way, procedure. Yeah, I'm good.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously, and I express my thank you to all of you.
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I'll defer.
Ms. Bedwack?
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion that Selectman Singer and Selectman Noble be the, are representatives on said committee.
I would accept.
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second for the makeup of the members from the Board of Selectmen. Is there any conversation? Ms. Noble, I assume you would accept.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I don't know.
Just, just a reminder that these will be open to the public?
Correct.
Okay.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I ask the town administrator to please, A, contact the police chief and ask who his designee is going to be, and B, to put it on the town website and however else we're going to notify the citizens that we're looking for two members.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Borowski?
Very briefly and somewhat related, and you can either take this up in your committee or we could vote on it now or later. What I would recommend that I've seen done in other communities is I would like to make a motion that we work with the police chief and our inimitable Drew in the back to see if it's possible to post sex offender information on our public access channels, because it is readily available both online as well as other places. I think the more visibility that we can get to this, the better off we are. And again, this would obviously be making sure the chief is okay with it.
Yes, and Mr. Borowski, personally, I don't, I don't see the need to wait for the committee to be formed to act on that request. As far as I'm concerned, if the board supports it, I would be happy with moving ahead with that request immediately.
Just for a point of information, I do know other communities do this. I know when I was on the Cape, I was watching TV, and they scroll sex offenders on...
I may, I may have done this in Milbury. I'm just throwing it out there.
So, thank you. Yes, yes.
But again, I defer to the board if we want, if we want to wait or do whatever, but that's my formal motion for the evening. Not that, it'll be my last.
So is the motion to do it now?
Yes, if...
And I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to...
Just for discussion, I, I would like to see what policies these other towns have on the books before we start putting people's names and information out there. I'd like to have some, set policies in place before we just start putting people's pictures up on the internet with, you know, it's a slippery slope, folks.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would counter is that this information is already readily available.
I understand that I want to protect the town from any liability, so I just want to see the policies and the bylaws that are in place first around broadcasting this before we do it. I just want to be safe.
Through Mr. Borowski. Would you be willing to come back and tell you with two things? A sample from another town, but also maybe just a list of a few nearby communities from Ms. Noble and the, and the board saying, these are communities that already do this?
Sure. I will certainly do my best to get whatever screenshots that I can.
And, and again, through the, through the chair, you might want to talk to Chief Maxfield. I'm sure he'll be...
Again, I mean, again, I'm just looking at, again, this is all readily available information that we are, is literally on the, on the police website.
Correct.
All I'm saying is that...
But my point is that he might be able to hand it to you on a silver platter and say, yeah.
Yeah, I will talk to Maxfield.
Southside walls in the hall.
Correct, exactly. So, but yes, I will, yeah, I will absolutely take care of it.
And so you were drawing...
If Ms. Noble...
I was drawing my motion for now.
And I'll draw my second.
And I will take care of it.
And if she agrees, I don't think we necessarily need screenshots.
Oh, I'll come with something, yeah.
If you agree, but simply what, some samples, what other towns have for their bylaw, and what towns may be already doing it. Just a sample.
I can almost certainly get the latter. I don't know if the former exists, but I will certainly look and, and get anything I can and report back to the board.
Thank you.
No problem. We're good.
So Ms. Craver, can you please make sure that that is on the agenda for the next meeting so we do not lose sight of Mr. Borowski's request?
No, you just don't want me to forget it.
I'm not going to let you forget it.
Through the chair, if we could just go backwards a little bit regarding the timeline we're looking at to get some, to get two people from, two residents on the board, because I don't think we...
We didn't set a timeline.
We said anything like that, so.
What do you, what do you mean?
When should people reply by? Two weeks, one month?
Next meeting?
What we'll do is, we will get it up on the web immediately. And generally, your standard operating procedure is two weeks. So after two weeks, we will bring you names if we have them. So people should send in requests, talent bank forms, and then contact our office.
So then hopefully, at our next meeting, we will have both on the agenda, Mr. Borowski's request, follow-up, and also an update on that.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
So for the people out there, if they're interested, please contact our office if they'd like to be on that committee.
Thank you. We'll move on to old business now. Item number one, discussion with Attorney Jonathan Silverstein. The first bullet point is available permits. Attorney Silverstein, thank you for coming.
Pleasure to be here.
Hey, John.
And I am personally looking forward to some guidance here.
Yeah, this one's tricky.
Good evening. As I understand it, the impetus for this request comes from a request by Fourscore, who's representative, I believe, is here today, to the Board of Selectmen, that the board consider negotiating an amended host community agreement that would allow for retail sales of adult-use marijuana products at their site where they're already, have received a host community agreement for cultivation. And I think the board's question or concern was whether the cap on, under the town zoning bylaw, as it currently exists, of two special permits for retail facilities would preclude the board from negotiating with Fourscore in light of the, if you will, first-in-time proposals by what was formerly Healthwise, now Green Gold Corp, and Valley Green Grow. So I just wanted to make sure that's, that's the issue that the town, the board has looked and forgotten since. So in my opinion, there's no legal reason that the board could not negotiate with Fourscore with respect to a retail facility at the Fourscore site. I don't think there has been a legal reason that the board couldn't at any point for a couple of reasons. The zoning bylaw provides for a cap on two special permits that the planning board may issue for retail facilities. The Valley Green Grow retail facility that is proposed under the development agreement that the board signed with Valley Green Grow has not been actively proposed at this point through either site plan or any other formal permit application, but it is contemplated under the development agreement. If that retail facility is to take shape, it will not require a special permit from the planning board. The reason being that the, the applicant submitted a definitive subdivision plan within seven months of its preliminary subdivision plan, and that preliminary subdivision plan preceded the town's adoption of the very zoning bylaw we're talking about, which is the zoning bylaw that caps special permits at two. So if ultimately that definitive plan is ordered by the court to be endorsed, then Valley Green Grow will not need a special permit for a retail facility. If that definitive plan is never endorsed, then a special permit would not be available for that facility because that facility is not in a district in which a special permit can be approved. So one way or another, either the retail facility would be prohibited because there would be no zoning freeze as a result of the definitive plan denial, or it would be allowed without the need for a special permit because the definitive plan has been approved and the zoning freeze essentially exempts VGG from requiring a special permit. So one way or another, VGG is not going to count towards that cap of two special permits. So that's the VGG one. Healthwise is a little murkier, in my opinion. They did receive a building permit for their facility prior to the first publication of the planning board's public hearing on that zoning bylaw that created the, the special permit process. So in that sense, an argument could be made, excuse me, that Healthwise, or Green Gold, is grandfathered from the requirement for a special permit, and that they too would not count towards the cap. However, I think that the stronger argument is that they would require a special permit. And the reason I say that is that the site plan approval issued by the planning board specifically states that it's only for a medical marijuana dispensary, and if they wanted to come back for adult-use retail, that they would require a new site plan approval or a modified site plan approval from the planning board. To my knowledge, they've not yet sought that. And the building permits issued by the building commissioner use the term dispensary. And although it's not defined, typically the term dispensary is used to refer to a medical marijuana treatment center. And I think when you take all of that together, what they had prior to the zoning bylaw was was authorization to proceed with a medical facility and not an adult-use retail facility. And therefore, I think they would require compliance with local zoning, which means going for a special permit. Now, as I've noted for the Board, state law does provide that a local zoning bylaw cannot prohibit conversion of a facility that had a provisional certificate of registration, a PCR, prior to July 1 of 2017. As I understand it, Healthwise at the time had that, and so there would be an argument about whether or not they could be denied the special permit. Obviously, as we've all seen, an area that there's, it's a new and emerging legal area in the state. So I can't give you any definitive guidance as to what would happen were there a special permit denial, and I just note that. But one way or another, I do think that they would require a special permit and that that would count as one of the two were it issued towards the cap. But either way, there would still be an additional special permit available under the cap with, for Fourscore to seek. So as I understood it all along, this Board had not wanted to proceed with negotiating a retail host community agreement with Fourscore, not because it was legally prohibited from doing so because of the zoning bylaw, but more because it viewed the spirit of town meeting's vote as not wanting more than two retail facilities, and that that was your reason, and that's a perfectly legitimate policy reason, if that's the policy reason that the Board wants to proceed on. But it's, you know, that's, that's policy, I can't advise you on policy. I can tell you from a legal perspective, in my opinion, you would have the authority to negotiate a host community agreement with Fourscore. So I've been talking for a while, if any members of the Board have any questions on that.
So for me, thank you, Attorney Silverstein, and confirm or correct me if I'm wrong, so if I'm understanding you correctly. From your point of view, as our counsel, we have at the moment zero retail licenses awarded for recreational marijuana use. One party in question could wind up being denied and not getting one. They could wind up getting one via Planning Board or by right and not have to account under the cap with Planning Board. We have another facility in town that's approved for medical, not approved or applied for recreational. So regardless of the first-party scenario, there's also a second-party scenario where they would have to, or you feel should have to go to our Planning Board, get a site plan approval, whatever, permit from them, forgive me, from them for retail as well. So having that not been done, we still would have one left if Fourscore chose to pursue that. So no matter how you slice it, there is one available for Fourscore if they pursued it and got the permit issued.
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Borowski, do you have a question?
More of a comment than a, actually, I know, it could evolve, you guys know me. So I'm very much in favor of Fourscore, I know some folks there out there, I mean, I think that generally speaking, they followed all the rules, everything's done. My concern with all of it, though, is that we all sat in that town meeting, and when the amendment was made to go from three to two, my assumption has always been, regardless of what we could legally do, the spirit is that two is our limit. Now, that may even potentially change at the next town meeting. But until that happens, I would have concerns about entering into another host agreement knowing that two could be put forth and that if we, and that if we approve Fourscore or anybody else, we're going to go above this, what I would consider at least individually, the spirit of the bylaw, because hypothetically, we could have four when all said and done.
If I may, if Mr. Attorney Silverstein would help, if I'm right or wrong in response to Mr. Borowski. If I take the first party I referenced, regardless of whether they get denied or approved, that still leaves one that was not applied for. So if Fourscore came, applied, got approved, got the permit from planning, yes, from planning, and we went with the spirit of the voters, which is what we want, you would still have potential one or potentially your two, which means if the other party that has medical came forth for a permit, they would within their right be able to deny that because they have two. And you would still be limited to just two.
I thought we couldn't deny the...
Well, so, yeah, I'd want to put a little bit of a caveat on that. Green Gold had the first host community agreement with the Board. And it actually, from the start, it contemplated both medical and adult use. The Board approved some amendments that strengthened the town's rights under that agreement more recently. But they also did have their PCR prior to July 1 of 2017. The question, and I, you know, I'm never shy about giving you predictions, but I wouldn't want to give you a prediction here because I think that the law is just too new and there's no answer in the law for this.
So...
Where the statute says that a zoning bylaw cannot prohibit conversion of a medical facility to an adult-use facility. It doesn't say, but it can require a special permit, and then the special permit granting authority can deny that. When we're talking about the intent of a statute, I think the intent is that if you had your PCR, that you would be able to convert. And so I think that does raise the question of whether, you know, if Green Gold were third in line, you know, for lack of a better term, I do think there's some question about whether or not a denial of a special permit to them as the third would be upheld. All of that being said, they're the only ones, I think they're well underway in construction. I tend to doubt that they would be third in line, I tend to think that they're going to probably be first in line. But, you know, that's some speculation, and I think it's more likely that VGG would be third in line. But again, if VGG comes in, by the time they come in, they would have presumably succeeded in their zoning freeze and they wouldn't need the special permit.
So, let me play off that, two questions. One, and I'm not involved in any discussion on the other parties' processes, and I've not viewed any documentation nor will I, but to one of your points, and I guess, just as hearsay, because I don't know, I'm not involved in that, but what I've heard is that that other party was not, A, wasn't even seeking or going after retail at that location anyway. So that would make that point moot. And then, and I lost my train of thought, I had another very good question, but it obviously wasn't that good because I forgot it. But it will come back to me. Mr. Borowski?
No, Mr. Chairman, I...
I'm going to get it while you talk.
Please, no, I think you bring up a good point, and Silverstein, so, one of the things is that, no, you got it.
Before I lose it again...
I yield my time to the man from...
Thank you, before I lose it again, because there is another party involved in a current case, how long can our town be held up while this is in land court? While other parties who want to come into our town and do business are kept in waiting, in limbo?
So...
That could be forever.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to give a prediction on when litigation's going to end. When you say, how long can we be held up, I mean, that's, I think that's entirely up to you because there's no legal, there's nothing from a legal standpoint that's preventing you from moving forward. Legally, in my opinion, you could say, look, we don't care what happens with that one project. We're going to negotiate with Fourscore, we know that it's likely Green Gold is going to come in. And if at some point down the road, Valley Green Grow is able to dispose of the various legal hurdles and come in with a retail proposal, if they choose to, which as you say, they haven't at this point, then so be it. We understand that there is that risk at some point. In terms of being held up, there's nothing holding you up except, I guess, the Board's concerned that that is a potential at some point in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's the issue, like, for the company that shall not be named. Because theoretically, I mean, okay, let's just, again, let's play hypotheticals. They lose the case, everything starts over. They win the case, they now have their zoning freeze and they can build, or whatever happens, you know, that they move down. In the meantime, I don't like the idea of the town being held up on one, because we could literally, we could sit for years without putting somebody in, and again, the company that shall not be named could theoretically never bring a retail license forward. Granted, it's in the host agreement saying that we have to grant one, I understand that. However, I'm having a hard time saying no to somebody who wants to do it because we have a potential of something that could or could never happen. So that's my balance of trying to say, well, the spirit of the law was X. But that's why I think it's important that we talk about this, so people, especially at home, understand and the audience, to say, this is the struggle we have realistically of, if we tried to grant another license for someone that could come in, that would be our two. If a variety of different things happen, a third could come in later based upon legalities. That's probably the best way to think about it. And how much do we want to hold up potential revenue, potential, whatever we want to call it? A new business coming to town because of a possibility that something may or may not occur years down the road, or it could be six months down the road, we don't know. So that's the struggle I'm having at the moment.
Through the chair.
Ms. Noble?
Mr. Borowski, you seem to be coming to a different realization than what you started at.
No, I agree, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I'm objective about everything, I always look for a, for a good argument.
Well, you're exactly right, this could be tied up in litigation for years.
Absolutely.
And all parties involved in any legal matter can certainly start throwing things against the wall, appeals and whatnot, to see what sticks. So I wouldn't expect this to be over, over for a while. And I don't think it's fair to any other business to hold them up based on hypotheticals.
Or it could be settled, and then a revised plan just never come in front of us either. Or I should say, you know, the Planning Board.
Mr. McGrath?
So my take on this is, we have received a bunch of input from the citizens on what they like and what they don't like about this business, you know, this type of business.
Have we?
And I think one of the consensuses on it is that they wanted, they want this type of business in IG, which I believe Fourscore fits that bill, okay? They, they have, or most of the people that have appeared before the Board have also said very nice things about Fourscore, about the way they've handled their approach to this whole thing and have been transparent and have worked with the Board in how, you know, and how they are going to, you know, attempt to do business in Cheltenham, and how they've showed that they've done business in Cheltenham. They have not been pushy, they've understood the realizations of the things that have gone on and all the mechanizations that have taken place, be, you know, behind the scenes and stuff, and they've been very, very patient. So I too agree that it's unfair to hold up a license to a company that has been very above board, is cited where the citizens believe these facilities should be cited, and has followed all the rules and regulations that we've had. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Attorney Silverstein, any other comments?
No, I'd just like to thank you very much for making it all so clear.
Yeah, no, really.
I'm not being sarcastic either, you really did make it very, very clear.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
And...
Really good, you're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Noble, and gave me quite peace of mind. So thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, my two cents, again, I'm sure we'll have further conversations.
I think you're up to ten cents.
I'm up to two.
I'm honestly going to, I'm going for twenty-five by the way, but, and I promise this will be brief, that I think we just need to recognize that if, in fact, we allow another firm in, that there is a possibility, and that people need to know this, that down the road at some point, we could surpass that two. Then again, we may not. And that's that balancing act that, you know, that's, this is why we sit behind the big desk, to catch the grief and, and like everything else. And honestly, I'm starting to lean more now towards saying, you know what, I'm kind of okay bringing somebody else in. Because actuality precedes potentiality.
Correct.
Very good, and...
Every once in a while.
If I may, talking about Fourscore, I believe they've already gone through the Planning Board process and is just waiting, so it would just be, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, this Board's determination, so I think they have gone through that successfully.
Can we get confirmation that that has happened?
Dan Glesman, member of Fourscore, we've applied to the Planning Board for a modification of our special permit and site plan approval to add a retail location onsite. So we do have an application that's been submitted to the Planning Board. I believe we're scheduled for the June 5 hearing. So we intend to move forward expeditiously with that process.
And I also sent all of you today a revised host agreement.
Mm-hmm.
That would allow it if you decide to entertain it.
Email?
Yes, I did email it.
Thank you.
And if I might add one comment with respect to Value and Grow, their zoning freeze is specific to that parcel of land that they're on. So just to be clear, they couldn't necessarily come back with another location in town relying on their host community agreement and development agreement. My understanding also is that the portion of the parcel that would allow a retail license is the commercial general portion of the parcel, which is a small corner of that parcel of their property, also located literally on a hill. So I, so I think with those facts in mind, that may help to put the Board at ease with respect to a future retail license coming down the line from VGG.
I just have to be able to look myself in the mirror and say that, look, if I say yes to this, then I realize that there is a possibility that I violate the spirit, and that's, that's a challenge.
So I think, we put a quote on the Board yesterday before a town meeting, and I'm hoping that quote will stay here for the next twelve months until I'm no longer the Chair, but that will be the word I wish this Board will operate, so...
Through the chair.
Ms. Noble?
Might I make a suggestion that since we just received the revised host agreement and other supporting documentation today, that we all take the next two weeks to review it carefully, make our notes, and then regroup on June 4th?
Sure.
Prepared?
Could you please add this to the agenda, Ms. Craver?
Yeah, because I would love to elicit community feedback on this.
You're going to be here on June 5th anyways, you may as well just stay for two days.
Excellent, and our intention is to...
On June 4th.
Is to host our community outreach meeting as well. Our intention would be also to host our community outreach meeting as well.
Do you have a date for that?
We have not yet scheduled a date, I'd love to work with you, Ms. Craver, to schedule an appropriate time for that. Certainly, that may assist in getting community feedback on the project.
Yeah, because that's going to mean a lot to me, because I'm going to be curious what people think about this.
So would you like me to schedule this, your meeting, for the meeting after his community? Or would you like to schedule this in executive session to have a conversation at your next meeting on your own?
Both, so, timing wise.
Where would you want to go? When, are you prepared to have your public hearing soon?
I have to look at the calendar, I know we're required to give seven days' notice at Town Hall and in the newspaper and sending mailers to Butters, so it'll probably take us a week to get that set up in terms of publishing notice in the newspaper, et cetera. I think we could, I just have, would have to look at the calendar, I'm not sure we'd be able to make it before.
We don't meet again for two weeks.
You meet before, they meet the 4th and the 18th.
I was going to, no, I was going to say, do we want to wait till the 18th?
Could you have it done before the 18th?
Because then you would have the feedback and everything.
Definitely have it done before the 18th, potentially before the 4th, I'd be more comfortable with the 18th, but we're happy to...
So then 18th, we'll put it on for the 18th and...
Tentatively at least, what I don't want to see happen, though, is that have the meeting the same, like, the next day as our, as our rescheduled town meeting, because I'm not going to ask people to go out two nights in a row.
And that's the 12th.
Yeah, so don't do it the 11th or the 13th.
Sure.
Please.
They'll be prepping on the 11th and tired on the 13th.
And probably angry both days.
If we're able to, to hold the meeting prior to June 4th, would we be able to come then on the 4th? Or just in the off chance that we can make it happen in time?
Through the chair, can we put a placeholder?
Yeah.
Certainly. Put a placeholder.
I personally have no problem with it, so long as...
Well, no.
Yeah, a couple of days.
So if they can move to the 4th.
And if it's too tight, then try for the 18th, just to give the residents a chance and everyone involved.
And you've already had outreach meetings prior to, this is just for the new amendment or modification.
That's right, we've held two formal community outreach meetings, this will be the third that will include the retail component.
So it might also be helpful, the discussion here, I think, was helpful for people at home to understand the spirit versus, you know, what legally you can do. It might be helpful if there is a selector that's willing to attend that meeting and just name it there so that people attending that meeting would understand that the contemplation may be three. I just think the more transparent you are in saying it and naming it, the more feedback you may get. So you can't, at least if you get to the end and there is a third, you can always say you showed it here in this meeting, this meeting, and you were very transparent about the process.
Through the chair and my colleagues, depending upon the night, I'd be happy to go, and obviously, I cleared whatever comments beforehand, and obviously, I'd invite anyone else to come, to come too, but...
If I can go up for a while, you know.
If I can go up for a call, you know.
I think, depending on the night, as many of us as possible.
So, knowing the night, it, it, but you may, as long as you haven't been asked, noticed, may have to post for a quorum, but other than that, sure.
Yep. So, if you just let our office know if, if you're gonna go, we'll find out if there's a quorum and then post it.
Post it.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent, did you have a, did you have anything you wanted to?
Yes, I have a question. I was under
Just come to the microphone.
Can you, can you come to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Come on, Dan, get out of the way.
When you're talking about the special permits and everything, I'm under the impression there are two medical and two recreational. That was the intent of the bylaw. And, um, I know there's talk about they're being lumped together and everything, but you always say that there's only two, and the way that we're looking at it, planning board, at least the way I'm looking at it, is that there's four. 'Cause somebody could apply only for a medical, which is what's happened.
Correct.
So, that would be one of the medical. The other large facility, it's, I just wanted to point out from the planning board's point, and this was said at many meetings, they cannot use the parcel on Route twenty, that Zone CB, for a retail facility. Because they have totally used all of their available square footage with their grow facility. So, that's just something else. Not, I'm not saying they couldn't, they would have to cut down on something else in order to use that there. That's just another
That's awful. I didn't know that.
Yeah. That's just another thing to keep in mind. They would have to come back, totally change it, and then put that facility,
So, I would say, thank you to Ms. Vincent, because, well, A, I, I agree, and I think, and she's right. So, I think we should be more clear with our words. The two meant retail and two, um, medical, so I, I agree with, with, with her. She's incorrect. We should be more clear. It would be considered technically four, two medical and two retail. They were
Correct.
They were discussed separately.
They could be four different sites.
But only two recreational.
Correct.
May I ask a very quick question? Yeah, I was gonna say, can, can we actually limit medicinal? I thought you could zone for it, but you couldn't limit it.
No, you, you can limit.
You can't limit, I'm sorry. All right, thank you.
I, I think what we've been talking about is, we know that Green Gold Corp wants to come back for retail. They've, they've said so.
Right. It's in their decision that they have to come back to the planning board.
So, they would require one of those two retail.
Gotcha.
And then the question is, would Fourscore be the second, or would Fourscore be the third? In my opinion, they'd be the second.
Correct. And any, any other points, uh, to Ms. Vincent's point, any changes would have to go before planning for approval.
So, does that mean then we would actually have another medicinal open up?
Well
Or is that just so vague that's why we have no idea?
I, I think, well, I, I don't, Mr. Glesman can answer whether or not he would wanna be a re, uh, uh, an R and D as well. I suspect so.
Yeah, we can apply for both.
Right.
So, I, I don't think, I don't think many retailers wanna pick one or the other. Most of them wanna do both.
Yeah, that's what I was curious to see, if you, in a sense, if you abdicated one by going to the other, or you actually keep both.
So, then, in effect, it could be four, two, or three. If, if you have four that say, I want retail, retail, only medical, medical, or I want retail, medical, medical, and retail. It could be any number, as long as it doesn't exceed the two medical and the two recreational.
Correct.
There you go.
I think that makes sense.
But in reality, you're probably looking at two.
Right. Jane, seriously, thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Doesn't sound really humble.
Thank you.
Not that, I don't mean to sound surprised, but thank you.
Any other questions on this for Attorney Silverstein from the board, before I recuse myself, before you talk about the other party?
No, this was actually a really good conversation.
Do you wanna stick around for the first part? I'm gonna email.
No, I'm out. Oh, uh, no, I'll be back for number two. All right. Please get me when you're ready to go to number two.
Okay.
Let's go ahead, Rob.
So, I recuse myself.
Shut the door.
Oh, he, he's going outside. Don't get him.
So, the next item on the agenda is short-term investigation regarding letter sent to judge from VGG and an archived email request. So, one of the questions I do have is, we didn't have, we don't have any material, backup material?
For?
Well, we referenced the, the letter to the judge. Nothing was submitted to us in our packet.
I wasn't asked to provide anything. I really wasn't sure where you were going with this. So, I figured you would have an opportunity to talk about what it is you're looking for, and then provide direction for your next meeting. Or, since Jonathan's here, he'd be able to answer any questions you have.
Since, if, if the board doesn't mind, but it's what I'd like to do, 'cause I know, I know Ken and Jeff and Kurt, and everyone's been very patient back there, would, could we talk about the email, archived email first? And bring them up. Are you good with that? Are you still awake back there?
Does that mean that David comes back in?
Thank you, Jonathan.
He's, I believe he said he'd rather
He didn't, I, I asked him, he said he didn't mind being present.
Since the subject matter is relating to VGG, he is choosing to step out.
Okay. I wasn't sure what this I'm not sure what this subject matter is about with archived emails. I didn't know if it was
Well, it's, it's part of the short-term investigation. It was mentioned before that we were going to, along with, um, sending questions to Jonathan, which the board voted on the short-term investigation, and was privy to the questions, that we were also going to talk about looking into older emails to, as part of the short-term investigation.
Okay. I have to remember that. Was that when I was not here?
Yes.
'Cause I did check the, um, the minutes, so.
So, this is part of it.
Okay.
So, again, again, thank you for coming, and thank you for being so patient. Would you like to introduce yourselves, and, and on a high level, kind of say what you do, and how long you've been here, maybe, and
Sure. My name is Jeff Sorrell. I'm the Town of Charlton IT technician. Uh, I'm fairly new. Been here about six months. I take care of the small-end IT problems, um, that the town has for all departments.
And I'm, I'm Ken Hahn, and I work with Microchip Associates, and we've been doing the Town's IT support for about, since two thousand and six.
Great, thank you. Did anyone else have any questions regarding roles? I know one of the things we were looking at doing is collecting some archived email. And can you tell us a little bit about, or I'm assuming it exists, that we have, do we have some kind of, I'm not a tech person, but do we have a software that archives all email, Town, Town email?
Yeah, we have a device that saves all email incoming and outgoing to any Town of Charlton email address.
And how, how long have we owned that? Just again, to
It's two thousand and seven or so.
Okay. Now, what, what is the procedure if one wants to ask to do a search and, and extract emails? If you could walk us through it, so again, everyone kind of understands what the process is?
Procedure in terms of what I, information I need to get, what you want?
I think you have a policy, or are you talking about the policy?
The policy or just what, what I need?
Let's talk about both.
Okay. What's your policy?
We don't, I don't have it.
I'd be glad you did. I know it was given to you. Sure.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Oh, right. Thank you.
Look at you. Do you wanna read it? I think it's pretty long, from what I remember reading.
So, can you, can you summarize what's, what's here, basically, or?
I didn't memorize it, but basically, um, I believe the request has to come from either the Town Administrator or the Chairman of the Board to the, um, Network Administrator, which is basically Ken.
Actually, if you give me the policy, I'd be glad to read it into the record, so people at home would, would know what the policy is. And all of you would know what the policy is. The following procedure will be used to request, let's see, archived email. All requests will be in writing and provide a reasonable description of the requested records and the reason for the request, including persons, dates, or ranges, subject or keywords, and/or keywords. A written request will be submitted through the Town Administrator and/or the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. The Department Head and/or Chairman of the Board or Committee will review the request to determine, one, the nature of the request, i.e., its public records, is sensitive or information that is subject to withholding under public records laws. Does the record request include information that is or may be subject to litigation involving the Town or any of its committees? If records might be used for litigation, Town Council shall be consulted with proper permission before the records are released. The Department Head or the Chairman of the Board or Committee will provide a cost estimate to the requister. Cost will be determined as prescribed by the Secretary of State's Bulletin for Public Records, found at, and the website is here. When a request has been reviewed by the Department Head and/or the Chairman of the Board or Committee and the Town Administrator and/or the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the written request will be submitted to the Network Administrator for retrieval. If request is denied, the denial must be specific, and basis for withholding the requested materials must be stated. All responses should be fulfilled or denied in writing within ten calendar days from the date of request in accordance with the public records law and Secretary of State's Bulletin for Public Records, found at, and the, um, guide, um, hot link is here. And then we have, go on to data security policy, but I don't think that's relevant.
Okay, thank you for reading that. We appreciate that. Um, another question that I had is, has this, have, has, has requests been made before by anyone? I'm, I'm just wondering how often
Not in my timeframe. I'm, I'm too new. And I don't have access to, to be honest. I'm, I'm, it's about my pay grade.
So, that's, that's a great, that's a great comment, though. So, who has, who has access, is it to, to, to that? Is it you and Ken, or you, Ken and Kurt, or?
Only, only me.
Okay.
Okay, so, secure.
Secure, okay. And, and you, so if, if someone needs something, they typically go to you, Jeff, right? And then, I know Kurt's sitting back there, but
They can send the request, and I can point them in the general direction, but, um, yeah, there are some things I can handle, and there's a lot of things that I can't.
Okay. And I know, I could thank Kurt for being up here, too, and, and can you explain your role in that? I think, are you copied on things, or how, how, just for, to clarify?
So, I've been a member of the Tech Committee since its establishment and have had a lot of hand in recommending policies to the Board through, through the cooperation of the Committee. And I have, until Jeff came along, had a lead role in the day-to-day technology activities throughout the town. Mr. Hahn here is a network technician, um, so, um, he is very familiar with the way protocols work and such, and makes recommendations to me, to the Committee, and then eventually to Ms. Craver for purchasing of equipment. So, um, if someone had come to me and asked this question, and I found out that you were asking this question, and I says, "Oh, Mary, we have a policy for that," and immediately dug out that policy and made it available to be forwarded to everyone who was concerned. So, um, to, to answer the other question is, has this ever happened before? Yes, we've had requests before. There was a request from a, a group of people that was quite extensive. And, uh, some of that email was retrieved, but the cost for that request, once that information was reviewed and properly dedacted, was quite high. And, uh, the request was never, uh, ultimately consummated.
Thank you for the explanation. Anyone around, any other board members had any questions, or anyone?
No, seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
It works, obviously.
So, moving on to the actual request, I do have it, and I can certainly email it, and I, let me just pass it if you can take copies. What I'd like to propose is that we ask you to, I have some search terms here. First, I'd look to the Board to see if they had any terms that they would like to add. 'Cause in, in my brief conversation with you, Jeff, it was very helpful that you kind of gave me what, what I should be, or what we should be producing. Um, and then, if you could reiterate again, if we give this to you about the turnaround time?
It wouldn't go to me, it would go to Ken. I mean, Ken, I'm sorry. Yes, um, so, you can answer that question.
It depends how big the request is, how much data gets generated by the query.
Okay.
Having, I will say, having worked with the requests and the terms, um, you have terms that are very, um, common, and you will have a huge, huge amount. Um, just, one of them is Mike. One of them is Selectmen. Your, Kara Himalowski, um, you're gonna get, end up with all of, every email that's been to or from her. So, I'm just letting you know, um, the request is quite extensive. If you could narrow it down to what you are looking for, we certainly could make sure that you get the information you're looking for. And I, up until now, I have, have not heard anything that particular that is being sought.
And, and that's why I've, I'm bringing it up here tonight, so everyone can, you know, provide input. Um, and I defer to the experts to help with the, the search terms. And again, this is part of the internal investigation that we decided to move forward with.
I actually, actually had looked at some of the dialogue from your past meetings, and I thought, from what I had seen, I thought this was gonna be an independent, um, audit. Or are you doing more than one?
So, that's a great point. I think you're confusing it with
So, we could just let everybody know at home what we're talking about in the investigation.
So, this is, this is the short-term investigation regarding how we were trying to find out how the audio, help me, the
The audio recording? Well, so, Madam Vice Chair, I think
'Cause I'm, I'm, I don't have my paperwork in front of me.
Yeah, this was actually slightly before my time, although, although I watched the news.
'Cause I thought this was already answered, then, if, if it was, if my understanding was correct, it was about the, um, Ms. Pat Rydex statement here in an open meeting as to how the attorneys from VGG found out, and I thought that had already been answered by Mr. Silverstein by saying that it had been done by
Sorry, I, I don't mean to cut you off. I, I will just note, I responded to that question as a confidential attorney-client communication as it relates to litigation.
I'm, I'm referring to the newspaper article. I think that that was public, and you did state
My answer to that, absolutely. I'm sorry.
And I, and I wasn't gonna bring up the stuff, the confidential information.
So, I wasn't clear that you were still doing a short term.
Karen, one of my suggestions, maybe, would be that you start from, you know, narrow your date. You probably, that would probably limit, you know, what you
So, the date, it was February fourth, two thousand and nineteen, to May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen?
Yeah, I think it, I think that is gonna make a, a, a data dump that is gonna be hard to handle. So, what I would, what I would suggest is to narrow it down to, you know, sometime in March as to when, when that's, when, when the incident that you
March first, we could do.
Yeah, yeah, I think that that's
Actually, it would be March fourteenth, March eighteenth?
Yes, I wanted to back it up a little bit, though.
I think if you look, if you look anywhere there in March, but I would narrow it down, that's gonna, that's gonna take two months right off, and it's gonna eliminate, you know, it's gonna eliminate a lot of stuff.
So, March first with an end date of maybe May first? And
Actually, yeah, well, through the chair, just for those who may not have been following along at home quite as much as, well, we have for a variety of different reasons, and please, actually, you know what, why, can I defer that to you to say what the intent behind this is, so that people at home or the audience have a better understanding?
May I, may I just ask for some clarifications for all of us sitting in the audience? We don't know what you're looking at. We don't know what you're talking about. We don't know what you're looking for in whatever it is that you're talking about, and why these people are involved in the conversation. So, could you tell us what's going on?
Sure. And I know the, the Planning Board Director is, is here. Did you want to say any words about
I thought this was your short term.
It, it is, but it's, it has to do with how this came to be, how we, how the, again, I, I expected it would have some information, so
So, I
I'm confused.
May, may, I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I just try to clarify what is going on? So, the, when we were in a Board of Selectmen's meeting, the Chair of the Planning Board made, made a statement, and then that statement caused numerous things to happen. One of the items that came up during a Board of Selectmen's meeting, during an open meeting, was how did this happen? And were any members of the Board of Selectmen involved? So, one of Ms. Speewax's requests was that we get to the bottom of this, to find out if any Board of Selectmen, and the, any members of the Board of Selectmen were involved in telling the judge, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, um, telling the judge that Ms. Ridlack was, uh, had disinformation from basically a closed lawyer, you know, lawyer call. And I might be off, you know, off a little bit on this, but that, that is the way that I understand what we're looking for.
And we did, thank you, that's an excellent summary.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
So, then, so then, the, the reason, so that is what we're discussing, okay? The second portion The second portion is, you asked, why are these people here?
And what is, what?
So, so we'll go with why these people are here. Mr. Ken Hahn, and Jeff, and, and Kurt from, Kurt historically.
I could email it.
Kurt historically is, were involved, are involved in our MIS system, and Mr. Hahn is the, is the guru, I'll call him, on how to retrieve emails and, and how, how you go about doing that with the system. So, the next thing that happened is, we have a policy in place on how this is supposed to be requested, which Ms. Speewack is, is, has come up with the document that's in your hands, which are what are email search terms, and she came up with these through, through discussions with Mr. Hahn and Jeff, and with Kurt.
No.
I had nothing to do with it.
No, not yet, not, I'm hoping to, to defer to them.
But, but I think they told you, you have to come up with your search terms.
Correct.
Okay. So what the board is discussing now is, is, you know, do we agree with the search terms? Do we, you know, what suggestions do we have for either search terms or eliminating search terms, or, as I stated, maybe narrowing down the dates that, that we want to look for emails for?
So the board is trying to establish it through, through email search, whether any member of the board of selectmen reached out to VGG or the judge?
I, I would believe that's.
Is that what you're trying to do?
How they, how they found out about it.
About what? About what?
Again, I apologize, I had a piece of paper I cannot access right now, and I had it all outlined, and I can't, I can't get to it, but.
Are you working on the floor?
That's right, but I did want, I did want to correct one thing, or Clara, what you had mentioned earlier, we did agree to a short-term investigation, that was voted on. We are also, I believe, on our agenda, talking about doing a long-term investigation, and that was brought up by chairperson Singer. So those are two very different things, and we did not vote on Selectman Singer's request, yet, but we did vote on the short-term investigation. So yes, that was, thank you, yeah, that was.
Through the, through the chair.
Yes.
Back to, back to the search dates, do we agree we probably want to narrow those down?
Madam Chair, just, if you yield the floor, just for a moment, is that, very, very briefly, from, this is going off memory, and please, I invite people to correct me. Basically, here's a timeline, and Patsy, I know you're involved in others, Ms. Speewack, obviously. March 16th, it's been alleged that the chairperson of the planning board made a Facebook comment that she had audio of the meeting. 3:18, that was the Wednesday, I think, or whatever day it was, 3:18, it was a special meeting here at the board of selectmen, it was not televised, there was only audio there, at which point, again, I was in attendance with a few others. Again, the, the planning board chair made a similar comment, that she had listened to, to the lawyer speak, and Patsy, correct me where I go astray. The very next day, knowing that it was not televised, nor could anyone have gotten the audio, one of the attorneys reached out to attorney Silverstein and asked the question of, have you heard X, Y, or Z that Ms. Ridlack had, is it Rydlock or Ridlack? I was going to, Ridlack, thank you, that Ms. Ridlack had been on, on the call and had potentially taped it. Having, or, or at least, that's what, that's what I, actually, I applauded Silverstein.
That was in the paper.
Yeah, that was in, that was in the paper, and there was, and there was some other stuff. And I believe that was alleged in a court filing. So I believe, so I believe the intent, and I obviously defer to my colleague behind this, is to either prove or disprove that anyone in the town had anything to do with informing the attorneys whether or not that Ms. Ridlack had listened inappropriately, or however you want to think about it, on, on the call. I invite, and, and a correction from anybody, Jonathan, I know you're looking at me.
I just want to be really clear about what was asked of me that next day. I was contacted the day, I think it was the day after, it could have been the subsequent day, but I think it was the day after the selectmen board meeting by VGG's counsel, who said he was looking at a Facebook post, which stated that Ms. Ridlack was quote, "listening to the attorneys." He asked me if I knew that she had been on the call, I said I wasn't aware that she'd been on the call, but that I had learned the previous evening that she had recording of the call. That, that, so, he didn't state at that time, though I, I always hate to speculate, but I think what is likely, what likely happened, and the board can conduct any investigation, of course, at once, is that he reached a conclusion that the court had asked if anyone else was on the call, although we had heard a beep indicating we thought that someone else might have entered the call, no one identified themselves, that's why the court had asked if anyone else was on. I suspect that he reached the conclusion from the Facebook post, that the term "listening to the attorneys" was intended as contemporaneous. That was apparently an erroneous assumption on his part, I believe he corrected it in his subsequent letter, based upon Ms. Ridlack's statements, that she was not contemporaneously on the call, but that someone had emailed her audio of the call. So, that's my take on it, you know as much as I do about who found out what when.
Right, thank you, Jonathan. So I'm thinking, again, for my colleague, long story short, I think the gist of the, of the ask, and again, forgive me, is that was anything offered forth, or did someone take information from the 3:18 board of selectmen's meeting, contact the attorneys in any way, and provide, shall we say, information that was not said? Because the court filing, and again, I stand to be corrected, said that Ms. Ridlack listened in and basically, there was wiretapping, I'm not going to give you the details, but, or was that a natural assumption or conclusion based upon a Facebook from, from a few days earlier? So really, I think that's what it comes down to. Did they, did they extrapolate out and apparently made, to your point, an erroneous assumption based upon a Facebook posting? Or was there something else that came out of that board of selectmen's meeting that somebody contacted them that led to the extrapolation and erroneous? And again, I defer to you if I said anything incorrectly.
No, I, I thank both you and Selectman McGrath for helping me with that.
So, so.
One minute, Patsy, yeah?
So, through the chair, so I think if we continue on.
The 24 hours after that meeting, so what you're saying?
So I think that if we continue with this, okay, just, just to try and button this up.
Yeah.
Okay. Is, does, does anybody else see, you know, anything else that we should change, or do, are there, are there things that we need to cross out, you know, or eliminate? So that, I'm not the chair, so.
Just to, no, through the, Madam Chair?
Yep.
To, to try and tighten this up, and make the search happen as quickly as possible, I agree with Selectman McGrath, and we should tighten up the dates to, I would have to say, you. 24 hours after. Yeah, 24, or, or even the 18th, if you will, even March 18th. Just, just to, to tighten it up, because if this is, if this is the scope of the search, then by tightening it up, you're going to get those results that much faster, and that's really important right now.
May I make a recommendation through the, to, to, at that point?
Yeah.
Why don't we go with Pi Day, that's why I throw that out there, March 14th to potentially March 30th?
Before the comment was even made?
No, we can't, we haven't.
Before it was made? Why would you do that? I thought you were being clear on your search.
Sorry.
If we're being really clear on the search.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you know what, forgive, you know what?
It would be, it would be March 18th, if we're going to be really clear on what we're looking for, and anybody who's ever had to, to, to look into search warrants, when you go before a magistrate or a judge to get a search warrant, you can't make it that broad. You have to narrow it down to exactly what it is you're looking for specifically, and you can't look for anything else. So I use that as my guideline.
I believe that the alleged Facebook posting was March 16th, could be compromised on that, to say March 16th.
Okay.
Until March, Jonathan, maybe a couple days after the 18th, so March 20th, 21st, would that work?
I, I would say so. It's not looking to see who informed.
I would put it, I would be more comfortable bringing it early in March, maybe, I, I'd like to start at.
I'm not comfortable with that, I think it's, it's too, too broad, and again, I look, I'm, I'm sorry to disagree with you, again, if you're doing a search, you have to make it very, very specific.
I understand, and, and what, what I'd like to do is leave it earlier in March, and, and then move the, the date, the second part, instead of May, we can move it up a little bit.
It's, Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's too much like fishing.
So, so, when.
I'm still going to prefer, I feel very strongly we should go early March, if, if we want to tighten it up on the other end, I'm good with that.
I, I don't.
But with all due respect.
I understand, I do.
Here's, here's my, my suggestion, okay? The first look at when this first entered the public ether, okay, which would be Facebook, which is what the attorney from VGG is claiming, okay? And what date was that?
I believe it was March 16th.
Okay, so I believe, I believe that should be your start date, okay? And then the end date is up to whatever the board decides, but that's my opinion, that March 16th would be, because this is the fir, that is the first time that this supposedly entered the ether, and, you know, move on from there.
If the meeting was the 18th, even assuming Jonathan was contacted 24 to 38 hours after, that's literally why I was saying 316 to 321, assuming that the scope is limited to this type of search, I think would at least be a fair compromise. Now, again, I, I obviously am one out of four members here, so.
I would go, as a compromise, I'd even go further than the 21st, I, you know.
Look at you being liberal.
So that would be March 16th?
So, March 16th to.
To March 21st.
March 21st.
Can we do March 14th, please?
Okay.
Why 14th?
Doesn't matter.
Why 14th? I'm just curious.
That's, that's fine.
It's a compromise.
Yeah, I have no problem with the 14th.
Again, I just like Pi Day, so sure.
So March 14th through March 21st?
21st, 22nd, either way, I mean, 14th to 21st gives you a full week.
Okay.
But, you know.
21st, so seven days.
Madam Chair, if, again, I, this is your request, clearly, so I'm just trying to.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's part of the investigation that we.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that you know.
Can we move this up until the, until sometime in May? And we just want to make sure that search includes any state or federal offices, please?
So what are you suggesting for a date?
If, May.
That's fishing. Is, is this an investigation of the board, or is this the planning board?
I was being, and I'm a little curious.
So my, so my, my thing is, if we're investigating this one item, okay? And if made, if it was in the paper, we've heard, we've heard numerous ideas of what has happened. I believe that March 14th to March 21st is exactly what we're looking for.
I think it depends upon scope, and I would, I would happen to say that, if in fact that is the scope, if that's the business requirement to look for, then I would agree for it. If that scope is to be expanded, then I think that might even be a separate conversation, quite frankly.
Well, I think, I think that the scope, that the larger scope is, is probably going to be covered more under Selectman Singer's, or Chairman Singer's request.
I would tend to agree with that.
So, so I think that is going to be a much broader.
And for, I'm sorry, John.
No, 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 I think that that's going to be a much broader discussion on, on what has gone on.
Yeah. And, Deb, for your benefit, and for those of the audience, there are, like, again, as some have mentioned, there are actually two requests for investigations, and Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I should have asked through you.
I think I already mentioned it.
Yeah, I was going to say, just to make sure everyone's aware, there is a short term that is, I believe, again, please stop me when, when I go astray, which was for a discussion around this specific incident. Chairman Singer has asked for a larger investigation to research the communications, or involvement, or relationships, if you will, between planning board members, planning department, board of selectmen, town administrator, basically executive versus, versus planning, and then others. I believe in, correct me, Ms. McGrath, that the assumption is that something like that would be, potentially fall under that larger type of investigation, which I'm.
And, and just to be specific, it's actually the next item on the agenda, and it says independent auditor to investigate actions between the board of selectmen, planning staff.
I'm going to choose one of those.
So, so, so I think that, I think that that would cover, you know, more dates, and David can be part of, is going to be part of that.
I'd love to hear his voice on that, frankly.
So, so, I, I just, Madam Chair, through, through you, I, I suggest March 14th through March 21st. The search terms, I have no problem with the search terms that you're looking for, I think that that is going to be, it's still going to be a huge data dump. I do caution that there is probably some stuff in there that is attorney-client privilege.
It's just our eyes.
So that, that would probably have to be either redacted or, or segregated, and then how we talk about that is executive session or whatever, but those, that's my suggestion.
I, I, again, Madam Chair, I think that was, I personally, I think that's a fair compromise. My only concern with any of this, and this is going to go for anything going forward, I don't want this or anything in the future to turn into McCarthyism. This is not the House Un-American Committee that we're just going to start investigating people and we're going to start running each other out. This is for a very specific reason, against a public official, and I'm okay with it, but.
And it was a board decision.
Absolutely, no, correct, absolutely, and I, and I wasn't on the board at the time, I fully support this, but I am cautioning that, in the spirit of moving forward, this, none of this can transform into McCarthyism, because I will put a stop to it as best I can, immediately. But this, I'm absolutely okay with.
And you would have a co-conspirator in that.
You just, you just like to be a co-conspirator.
I do.
So, Madam Chair, again, I'd love to hear your thoughts, I think three, at least I think for a limited scope on this, I happen to agree with Mr. McGrath, that 314 to 321 would hopefully, again, unless you disagree, serve the purpose for this very specific item. But if you disagree, I'm, I'm, again, I'm always willing to hear a better argument.
Because of the long-term investigation we're going to be talking about, that's.
And if that fails, we, we can always revisit this, quite frankly.
Correct. So with that, I will make a motion that we.
Madam Chair, I need to ask a procedural question here for you, so, this request is going to come forward, it's going to be authorized, it's going to be executed. The data dump that comes out of it needs to be reviewed, as Mr. McGrath has pointed out, for potential attorney-client privileges, or anything else that might rightfully be dedacted. Who is this information going to be given to, to do that?
So, excellent question, thank you. The, as far as I can, we are the elements that will be reviewing it, and then we, it can be redacted after that, if, to be determined.
Yeah, attorney-client privilege, we, we're the clients.
Right. So we, we, we can see it, and it's just going to us.
Oh, sorry, sorry, just procedurally, since I was elected after all this, and I know there's a lot of ACP prior to May 4th, can I review that stuff?
In my opinion, the, the current board of selectmen is the executive.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I just, I just want to make sure, I don't like to, all right, we're good.
Yeah, you're not out. You're not off the hook.
All right, so, anyway, yeah, I'm good.
So, so with that, I'll, I'll make my motion that the dates, we do an email search, the dates are going to be from March 14th through March 21st, 2019. The search terms are as listed below, which will be sent, if, a request in writing will be sent to, to the town administrator, and then from the town administrator to the, to Mr. Ken Hahn.
How do you want the data presented?
Yeah, I was just going to say, through the chair.
Either on a thumb drive or, not paper?
Thumb drive, I would say.
Thumb drive for security.
Thumb drive.
Perfectly encrypted.
Thank you. Because there may, there will be, she's going to, you're sweeping in some legal issues here. I recommend you put it on a thumb drive, we put it on your selectmen's computer, and then you'd be able to. and then you'd be able to order a laptop there. It would be, you would be able to come and view the material, but it would stay there.
Definitely password-protected, no matter what, so I will second that, if we hadn't already.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Okay, passes you unanimously, thank you.
Can we take some of these?
I took mine already.
Oh, forget it then, never mind.
Go ahead. David's gonna be, David's gonna be a while.
So, before we all leave, is there anything else that we can help you with tonight?
Just a question, how long about would that take?
I have to look at the guy in the chair.
It depends how much data comes back.
Do you think we can have it before our next meeting?
Oh, yes.
Okay, that's awesome, that'd be great, thank you, I really appreciate you staying so late.
Thanks for all your help. You're doing, at least in me, if you're dealing with somebody with this knee of pain.
We're waiting for, I guess...
It's a long walk, the way down there.
Yeah.
You had to back it down the hallway.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Noble?
I will have to leave by ten.
Okay, I think based upon what's left, this should be rather quick, and I'm hoping that my request will be exceedingly quick. I'll give Mr. Borowski a second to return, he said he was gonna be quick, and would help make this brief. People will humor me, I have to get my system, my iPad backup over there anyway. There are no notes on here, correct?
I know.
Okay.
In the future, please let me know what the vision would like for backup, usually I try to anticipate what we decided.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, you guys ready? So, under all business, I will put my glasses back on. So, let's see what I'm saying, or see what I'm reading, small things. Number two, under all business, independent auditor to investigate actions between BO, asked Board of Selectmen, planning staff, as discussed four nineteen, as an agenda item, and I think I was also relatively, or fairly clear, I think, in what my desire was for this. In the past, we had the chair of another board come to our board and request that we hire an auditor, an independent auditor who comes in from the outside and goes through everything. And I would like to do the same, and I would like to, and I would like it to the Mueller investigation, in that there's been a lot of talk around town lately, and I think that frankly, there's no price you can put on the trust of the public. So, that being said, I think that it's important that we show everyone who lives in this town that the Board of Selectmen are a group of honest, hard-working people who care for nothing more than the best for this town, the people who live here, and that the best way to ensure that they know that we are going to treat everyone with the absolute utmost fairness and impartiality, no witch hunts and no favoritism, everyone's treated the same, is to shine the brightest lights on the darkest corners of this building. That being said, it is something that I was hoping you would humor me on, to hire an independent auditor, as we did on behalf of Water Seward when they asked, to come in and look not only into the relation or communications between Board of Selectmen and the planning board, and I would use three words, that I would have them look for, illegalities, irregularities, or even just improprieties. Things that were wrong, unethical, or even just unprofessional. And while they're looking for all of that between our two boards, that should the auditor find anything else, Board of Health, Clerk's Office, I don't care, any department in this town, they should have access to emails, they should be looking for town issues that were being dealt with on private email servers, off of the town email service, ethics violations, anything at all that the auditor finds or discovers during the audit between our two boards should also be brought forth and reported on. They should have access to emails, audio, video recordings, minutes of all the meetings of the boards, given complete access. Public records requests should be granted timely, in a very timely fashion. They should also be given, I would hope, access to town employees and elected officials, if they want to ask them questions and talk to them. And then when they come back with this report, it should be vetted to make sure that nothing has to be redacted for legal reasons. And then the report in its entirety and all of its findings should be published on the town website in full view of the public. That's what I'm asking for and hoping the board would support.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. McGrath?
Absolutely.
You absolutely have my support, because, think of this, my best-case scenario, which is what I'm hoping that it'll find, nothing is found. That's, but then it puts, it puts to rest everything, however, let's be all honest, that there have been issues over the past year, and there may be recommendations to say, you know what, this is a better way for multiple boards to work together, or communicate, or have issue resolution. But either way, the more we can put sunlight on this, I'm all in.
The brighter lights, the better.
So, through the chair, just on the...
Mr. McGrath?
On the mechanical portion of this, how, all the nuts and bolts, how are we going to go about selecting an auditor? Who is going to select the auditor? And then, most importantly, there's a price tag to this, so we have to get an estimate on it, you know, the RPA, whatever, so let's move to that.
So, to answer, I think, part of your question, and Ms. Craver can correct me if I'm wrong, did we pay ten thousand dollars for the last auditor?
I think it was about that.
So, the last auditor cost the town taxpayers, the town, ten thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars for peace of mind of over nine thousand residents.
Money well spent.
Money well spent, correct, and to let the public acts have full view of everything that goes on. Now, I think it's important to say, this auditor should have access to everything. The auditor should also report back, in my opinion, if people refuse to cooperate, should be part of the report, because if you have nothing to hide, and if we are good, honest, hard-working people in full view of the public, then we have nothing to hide, and we should cooperate fully. So that should also be reported on. As far as the auditor's selection, I would, I was gonna say, I would actually refer to Ms. Craver on that, on how the auditor was selected for the Water Seward Commission request, when they came to us for a very similar process.
We took a look at people who, firms who did audits. I would recommend on this one, just to keep it clean, that the chairman contact Town Council and get a recommendation of Town Council. That way, my office isn't choosing them, or no one else, you know, no one, but...
That's a good idea.
And I will make sure that all the departments and the auditor has full access.
So then the first step of the process would be for the board to make a motion in a second, if they wanted to entertain this, to authorize me to contact, okay? So, we have a motion in a second, for me to contact Town Council to begin the process of getting recommendations. Those recommendations will be brought back to this board, I will never, I will, as my first meeting as chair, end this with, I will never take an action, and you all know that, without communicating with all five of you.
I trust you.
And so, I will take what I get back from Town Council, and I will make sure that is shared with every member of this board, and then we will act in unison moving forward.
Of course, man.
Sounds good.
Cool. So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously, and thank you for your support. We'll move on, are there any committee reports?
Nope.
Any BOS policy reviews?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I would just like to thank the, A, the Public Safety Building Committee for all the hard work that they did on that. I mean, they had their i's dotted and their t's crossed, and I think that as smoothly as that went through town meeting, they had answered all the questions and told, and made the public aware of what was going on, the situation they had, and how it needed to be rectified. With that being said, I would really like to thank the townspeople at town meeting for supporting, supporting the public safety building, and, you know, there was a lot of hard work put in by that, by the committee. And a lot of meetings I missed, but the group, there was a core group that really, really pushed that, and I just want to say thank you to them.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Actually, speaking of which, post-town meeting, when it closes, we have to start thinking about if we're gonna call for a special election for a possible debt exclusion, unless we find the one point something million annual revenue.
That's not on tonight's agenda.
No, correct, just something to think about.
We'll keep that ready.
Oh, no, enough of what we're saying, start off there. I jumped out of the business.
Actually, you have a good point, if, like, we'll put them on the next agenda,
please.
and so you can have a conversation with them on their next steps.
Please do that. Anything else, before we move on to the town administrator's report? Student's like person has already given hers. Ms. Craver, do we have a report tonight, or, let me check the...
Yes.
Yeah.
Superintendent John LaFlesh from Bay Path has provided you with a list of names of Bay Path students receiving certificates from Mass MEP on June third. The Webster Adult Basic Education Program will also be recognized. And I did send all that information to you, if you're able to attend. The WRTA update, we've been, we were informed that the Worcester Regional Transit Authority would be eliminating their route in Charlton, and they were planning on extending the route in downtown Southbridge. To give you an update, at this point, we had a person who was disabled on Masonic Home Road, who was going to lose his ability to get to work. Many people jumped in and started calling them, we have rectified that, and he will still be able to be picked up. So I will, as I get more information, I will provide that to you.
Through the chair, just to the, to the town administrator, with budget negotiations going on, and the T, the MBTA, making all sorts of demands on the financial resources of the Commonwealth, I think it behooves us to contact our state reps and our state senator and tell them that this is unacceptable by the WRTA. The WRTA should be able to find enough money to make sure that the bus comes through Charlton as they have set it up. It is appalling that we on the outskirts of one twenty-eight or nine, in ninety-five have to scrimp and piecemeal together bus routes and good public transportation, you know, because the T, the Metropolitan Bay Transit Authority is sucking up all the money. And I think that we need to really make sure that the reps in the senator know how we feel.
Mr. Chair, I support my colleague's recommendation and make a motion that we craft a letter from this board stating our very strong feelings about such topic.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else, Ms. Craver?
Electronic signboard. Ms. Norman, a resident, came in with concerns regarding the electronic signboard that the town had been working on. We did go out to bid for quotes and had recommend, had a recommendation ready to bring to you tonight, but hearing her concerns, we will be bringing this to you at your next meeting, as well as policy for review and consideration. In the policy, I'm gonna suggest that we limit the sign to black and white, and for special occasions such as Old Home Day or fireworks, we could have color. And there will be a recommendation for a time to turn the sign off at night, in order to accommodate the residents.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Now, if I may bring up something under other business unknown, the time of posting, I've been catching up on my map. We've received a letter questioning the process for bridge naming. And what is involved as part of this are not only residents of town of Charlton, longtime family members, but also two of which were veterans. I would like to see if we can get that conversation started on our next Selectmen's meeting. Ask Mr. Foskey if he can come, or if he can help us guidance on bridge naming in town, what our policies and procedures are, direction. We're gonna make one. Sorry.
All right, sorry, Mr. Chairman, very briefly, I promise, kind of similar when it comes to resident communications, I think a lot of us have received either phone calls, emails, some type of contact regarding the mushroom factory, if we want to go, warehouse?
Farm.
Farm, thank you, we will call it a farm that's going in.
It is a farm.
I will say that we've all received multiple emails on it, and I'm afraid this is gonna be deja vu all over again. I don't know what, if anything, can be done, but I think we need to have a discussion.
Is it in front of the planning board?
I think that is...
I don't know.
I was just asked that question, have they submitted anything, or do they need to?
I...
They don't need to?
I don't believe they have to.
But that would be your purview, correct?
It was deemed...
By right?
By right, so you don't, doesn't come to us there, but there's lots of concerns even to argue with us.
Yes, just be prepared that, I mean, again, I don't know if we need to discuss making changes to zoning or not, but if things like this are gonna keep occurring, I think the residents are gonna look to us and the planning board respectively to either solve this together or solve it independently, but at some point, I think this board needs to discuss it.
So, Mr. Foskey, with that?
Please.
So, I think...
If it's not, go ahead.
So, through the chair, I believe that the planning board has received money for your zoning, for zoning by-wire view passing. So, maybe that would be one of the things that you look at.
But that's not gonna help with the current situation. So, no, we don't make any example, however, I wonder, to Mr. Borowski's point, would it behoove this board to reach out to Masonic Home, who owns the property in question, to ask if they could perhaps be more outgoing in communication with neighbors, and just make sure, and just ask them, we can't make them, but ask them if they would just work with the neighbors.
I would love to make the neighbors as happy as humanly possible, if it is a by-right, which again, I understand it is.
Again, so it's just a request.
Correct, absolutely.
I can reach out to Overlook and ask them if they would, them and the developer would please reach out to the neighbors.
I believe one of the neighbors who's directly aside of it is, because it's a building, they're gonna have to clear cut everything to get their drainage and stuff. And I think that that is what is really fueling us, that this gentleman is basically gonna have no, you know, if they have to go through planning, the planning board would make sure that there would be screening and stuff, and that, you know, through the chair, as you pass.
Through the chair, I have, because it's actually in the village district, it is, it's the worst place, because there's only, is it fifteen feet from the front? Because that's how the village is zoned, so it's gonna be way up front in the property, and everybody's gonna see it. Fact number two, I did, I did a lot of research about mushrooms, I should be careful about the research I do, but it seems like many of them are in industrial zones. Just because of the process, it is a mushroom, and it is agricultural, however, I've looked, other states, this state, and they tend to be enclosed off, built like old factories and stuff, so it's something, clearly, our biolab does not address it, and because it's considered agricultural, it is by right, but it's, it's, I have, I have had calls and Facebook messages and everything else, people are...
So, through the chair, I just, I believe that the gentleman that is proposing this operation, he is a congenial, community-oriented person. I believe that if we work with him, we can, maybe, maybe Masonic Home can, you know, either include more land in the deal, or move this back, you know, I'm not sure.
So then would this board move in second, or be inclined to direct the town administrator to contact Masonic Home to that effect?
I would say Masonic Home and the...
And the developer.
And the developer, so I would make a motion.
Second.
And let's just be really clear on what you're wanting me to do.
Facilitate communication, that's all.
So, my, my, I guess, my, what I envision is that the one, the one abutter is very worried that they're gonna clear cut it, and then... that if they're going to clear cut it and then he's going to be in a residential district and he's going to have a commercial business aside of it, okay?
Well, Zach, I just want to ask you a question, if I'm going to be talking to them, was that contemplated when we did the Village District?
No, it was not.
Okay.
The this, this is basically on the edge of the Village District, if I'm correct.
And agricultural, because nothing would ever, ten years ago, nothing would have ever passed on the master plan if agricultural wasn't allowed everywhere, so that was the compromise.
So so what happened with the with the Village District is it it was originally limited to the frontage of Masonic Home Road, basically going down to Route twenty. Masonic Home came in and asked if the Planning Board would please encompass their whole parcel as in the Village District because they were, they were contemplating that at some point in time, they were going to, they were going to add, you know, shops and things up there, amenities for the, you know, for the, for for their clients, for their residents. And the Planning Board was very amenable in doing that and, you know, because Masonic Home's been a good successor.
Absolutely, yeah.
And and we did not envision the the Masonic Home carving off a piece of the, you know, property in the Village District at the tail end of their property in a residential neighborhood and, you know, putting a farm.
Basically, let's see if there's if there's anything we can do to to help develop a compromise, that's my big word of of the year compromise.
Through the chair, can I make the offer that they can come to our Board and we may, I know, I've been told through the, you know, rumor mill that there isn't a lot of funds involved, so maybe we can waive site plan fees and do, you know, some sort of a review with them to work with them.
So I think all we can do is is extend the invitation.
Exactly.
That's good, that's worth it.
Would that be good coming from the Planning Board?
Well, I think first.
I will do this piece, but.
So first, the first thing I would do, so so what what my my suggestion and and how how this should work is that you reach out to them, Masonic Home and the developer and explain to them that there are issues, okay, in the neighborhood and people are very.
Upset.
Upset, to put it mildly. And we would appreciate if the developer would contact the the Planning Board Office and and just have a sit-down with them so that, you know, so that things can be worked on.
That's going to work?
We will, we'll work with them, we'll, we can waive fees, we can do, if it's a huge budget issue, if it's not, you know, if they'll work with us, we can do.
Good enough, you know what, that honestly, that's probably all we can do and I appreciate it, thank you. No problem, so we're good.
Okay.
All right, I'm done, promise.
So is there any other business then, unknown at the time of posting? Seeing and hearing none. Our next meeting will be the mock town meeting, May thirty of two thousand nineteen, at nine AM at the Charlton Middle School. I will do my best to try to attend that one, I probably have to get off work. The next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will be June fourth, two thousand nineteen, six thirty PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. And I don't have a a motion.
For executive session?
Somebody want to make that motion?
A motion to move into executive session via MGL, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one A, Number Three, to discuss strategy, reassessing legal strategy with respect to litigation of Valley Green Grow. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares.
We have a motion.
Does the Chair so declare?
So we have a motion and a second, the Chair does so declare. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do this by roll call vote, Ms. Bealak.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Borowski. Ms. Noble.
Aye.
Mr. McGrath?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, although I will be recused from this session.
Debbie, you're second of the ten, right?
Yes, yes.
I promise we'll be out here by the, swear to God.
And just to remind, yes, so Ms. Noble has a hard stop at ten o'clock.
Yeah, cool, all right.
And now executive session, we will come out of executive session solely to adjourn this meeting.
Drew, can you just come back in five minutes, after you do that? Maybe ten, max, we'll be done in five, I promise.